Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 15, 2006 meeting of the Glendale City Council. We call to order at 6:10 PM. A way of roll call.
Council members Manukian, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. My salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Quintero on the invocation by City Clerk Artie Casacchio. Can you stand?
You join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this day in 1945, the empire of Japan surrendered to the United States of America, bringing an end to the Pacific stage of the Second World War, a war with heavy losses suffered on both sides. The sacrifice that thousands of Americans made to ensure our nation's security and to preserve the freedoms of this nation should not be forgotten. Today, let us pray and remember their sacrifice, from those who died at Pearl Harbor, to the Battle of Midway and the island battles, to the brave men and women who served valiantly so that our flag could be raised above Mount Suribachi in Iwo Jima, to the civilian casualties in Nagasaki and Hiroshima. On this anniversary of Victory in Japan Day, let us remember them and live so that they did not die in vain. We pray for these heroes and the heroes of today. May they be safe and return home soon. Amen.
Amen. Do we have your report?
The agenda for the August 15, 2006 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 10, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And tonight, I would like to adjourn the council meeting in the memory of Charles Whitso. I'll read a little bit of his bio that was published in the paper today. I think most of us up here knew him at one time or another. He was past president of the Glendale Unified School District. He worked as a former president of Kiwanis Club of Glendale, involved in many charitable organizations. He went to USC and he graduated with a degree in psychology and law and was an avid sports fan of USC his entire life. He served as the former president of the Westwood and the Glendale Bar Associations, was a member of the Institutional Review Board of Glendale Memorial Hospital, was on the Board of Directors for the Glendale Community Foundation, the Glendale Family YMCA, and the Board of Foothill Youth Services Projects. And he did a lot of other community activities. He was a great resident of this city and did a lot, and he'll be sorely missed in this community. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
If I may add to the remarks and thoughts on Mr. Whitso. I remember the first time I met him, it was back in 1987, my first attendance at a Glendale Bar Association meeting. You can imagine a young lawyer walking to a room of stuffy, older lawyers, looking at you sideways, but Charlie, Mr. Whitso, was the first one to extend a warm hand and to welcome me to the Glendale Bar community. I remember his great stories of marlin fishing down in Cabo San Lucas, and he'd always come back with a great tan and a great story. He will be sorely missed, and our condolences from the city to his wife Ginger and his family.
Thank you.
I would also like to add to that. He was a wonderful and caring guy, who spent an awful lot of time working for the common good here in Glendale, and my condolences to his family.
Thank you.
Same here.
And Mr. Yusefian.
Same here.
Same, oh, same here.
Actually, not only I knew him on the city issues, I actually used him as an attorney. I could tell you, while attorneys sometime get a bad rap, he was an example of a good attorney.
He gave you good advice?
He gave me good advice. He was honest with me. He charged me a decent rate, and he did a good job.
That's all you can ask. Thank you. And with that, what is next, please?
Next is 3A, Presentation and Appointments. At 3A is the Agenda Preview for the Meeting of August 22, 2006.
Mr. McCall.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, there are a few items to bring to yours and the community's attention. Under the Business Agenda and the Housing Authority, there are two items. The first is a motion revising the source funds from redevelopment set-aside funds to home funds for a project located at 711 through 717 North Kenwood. Additionally, there is an item from the Director of Community Development Housing regarding the reservation of community housing and development organization funds in support of a potential development of affordable housing project for property that's located at 624 through 630 Geneva. Later, at 2:30, there will be a special meeting for a presentation by the Director of Parks and Recreation regarding park development, impact fees for parks and libraries. That'll be a special meeting in the afternoon. On the City Council Agenda that evening, there are several items. The first is the City Manager will be providing a report on the AT&amp;T Project Lightspeed Proposed Agreement. Secondly, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be providing a report regarding grant funding from the County of Los Angeles area on aging for the Nutritional Meals Program and Integrated Care Management Services. And then there'll be two hearings. First, the Director of Public Works regarding the 2006 Congestion Management Program Self-Certification Process. And secondly, the Director of Planning on an Appeal of a Conditional Use Case located at 2644 Kennington.
Thank you. And what is next, please?
At 3B is reappearance of Mr. Baumann and Son to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the appointment.
Sir, a second. Discussion, nope, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
And that's Mr. Najarian.
I have a brief comment on the lighter side, Mr. Mayor. Is George Chapchan in? No.
There he is.
Someone's pointing to him.
What do you do now?
George, I would like to congratulate you and your staff. This Friday, I had my chance to attend the first, what do you call it, the outdoor movies, the evening movies at Verdugo Park. It really was a wonderful family event. Your staff did a great job. They had a few technical difficulties, but they worked right through it. And I'd like to encourage everyone out there with kids, even if you don't have kids, the next one is going to be this Friday at Montrose Park, and it's going to be starting at dusk, and you have free popcorn, and bring your lawn chair, bring a blanket, sit down under the stars, and watch a newly released on DVD movie. But it's a lot of fun, and I think it's a great program. It doesn't get much attention. I know we try to publicize it, but again, this is not the first year you've done it. It's a great event for the whole family, and I think it's one of those things that brings the neighborhoods and the people of Glendale closer together, so I applaud those efforts.
Well, thank you for mentioning that, Councilman Najarian. We're proud of it. The staff has really worked hard. And if I can just make another plug, on Wednesday nights, we have concerts in the park, and it's family-oriented again, and we've had over 600 people at these concerts, at each concert. And the final one is tomorrow night, and it's rock and roll, so please come out and enjoy it. We're glad we're...
Where is it?
That's going to be at Verdugo Park at 6:30. But thank you for mentioning it.
Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, I think all of us got this thing in our reports, but I just wanted to bring this to people's attention. As you know, several months ago, or maybe about a year ago, we went through a very tumultuous time dealing with shopping carts, if you remember that. We've been dealing with that for several, several years, and finally, we adopted a shopping cart ordinance. I'd like to give you a report of what the result of that was. There are 48 stores, including the Burbank Home Depot, that part of it is in Burbank, part of it is in Glendale. Out of that, 48, 47 are in compliance. Forty-seven are in compliance. There's only one that is not in compliance. So 96 percent, there has been a 96 percent reduction in abandoned shopping carts. As a matter of fact, our system has been so successful that City of Burbank is considering adopting a similar ordinance. So I just thought, let you know...
And what percentage?
Reduction.
Reduction?
96 percent.
96 percent?
96 percent.
You don't see them there.
Right. And there was a lot of arguments made during the night that we had to adopt this, that this is not going to solve the problem, and we will still continue to have this issue, and so on and so forth. And at the end of the day, I think our vision was the right one, and that has eliminated a lot of them. Although I see a lot of people now walking around with their own personal carts that they haul behind them, and I think that's the right thing to do. Scott, I'll let you give you an update, because sometimes you never see these things. Thought that would be a good thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Susanna Dellis should get a lot of credit for manhandling that thing and making it happen. She put in a lot of time.
Frankly, Mr. Mayor, his persistence, he's been at this for the last 10-plus years or so.
And from my standpoint, again, a reminder on Dream Year Roses, September 10 at KBC here in Glendale, 40/50 restaurants, all types, Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, Buckingham and Flit Ridge Restaurants, Dance Orchestra, entertainer from Vegas performing Frank Sinatra Tribute, selling auction with a couple hundred items, live auction, seats on the float will be up for auction, and some trips. New car dealers have a fear there are new cars there. It runs from 4:00 to 7:30. That's KBC and Sim Glendale at the end of Grandview, so it's not far away. It's $50. It's been that way for the last six years. This is the seventh year. And after the 1st of September, it's $60. So if you understand, you can get tickets at the Chamber of Commerce, the Alex Theater, Parks and Recreation Department downstairs, or you can call the number on the screen at 244-8390. Thank you very much. Yes.
One thing, another thing that you are also doing, which is chairing the Unity, I mean, Relay for Life, and I see Ms. Falco must have gotten the memo, because she is wearing purple. And what a purple that is, beautiful purple. Some of us have some purple on us, and I just wanted to remind you guys that if you would like to sign up for that, which is to fight cancer, to be a part of that, you need to call Linda Patrick at the City Hall, and she will hook you up on that.
And the phone number is?
548-4844. And it is going to happen in October 1st. So October 1st, we'll all get together and go up and camp out. October 7th, sorry. I'm mixing it with Unity Fest, which is October 1st. Too many events, sorry, guys. So that's October 7th.
Rain or shine?
Rain or shine. Bring your tents.
We'll see.
And if you haven't done this, I'll tell you, it is amazing to watch council members try to pitch a tent.
Not going to watch me pitch a tent.
That's, you should bring a video camera and check that out.
I'm going home.
You can submit it to bloopers.
It'll take me two minutes to get home from there. I'm sleeping in my own bed. That's much better.
Or you can just hire the contractor to put it up for you, which is what I did.
I had challenges last time, believe me.
I slept in tents in the military. I don't need to do it again. Okay. With that, what is next, please?
Five is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Is there a motion?
Move Consent Calum.
Second. Second discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. What is next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, First Speaker, Alina Azizian? Azizian? Is he? Messed up.
Alina Azizian, I'm here with Relay for Life. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I wanted to thank Councilmember Yusefian for the plug he made for Relay for Life. And I'd like to thank all of you who wore purple today, even the purple buttons, really helps raise awareness about our cause and about the event, and it's such a fantastic event. And I noticed that some people here, whether accidentally or intentionally, are wearing purple, so I'd like to thank you as well. I'd like to thank a few of our sponsors really quickly. Prudential, Glendale Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, Glendale Water and Power, Glendale Parks and Recreation, and Glendale Public Works. We also have a few more sponsors we're counting on, including USC Norris Center, which was our presenting sponsor for the past few years with $10,000. And if you know of anyone else who wants to sponsor, please do call us and let us know. I'd also like to encourage everyone from the community to participate. It's a really great event. It's 24 hours. We eat together, we dance together, we listen to music, we walk. And for the troopers who stay all night long and walk at 4:00 AM, it's an even more bonding experience to spend that time together. Last year, we had a great time. It was my first year doing it in Glendale, and unfortunately, my last, because I won't be here for this year's Relay for Life. But I do encourage everyone to participate. Again, you may call Linda Patrick at 818-548-4844, and she can let you know about sponsorship or who to contact if you'd like to form a team. And teams can be however many people you want. It can be your family, your friends, your coworkers, your employees, if you want to make them all do it. But anything you could do to show support, to help in the fight against cancer would be fantastic. Thank you very much for your time.
And Mr. Mayor, Linda Patrick, who had to leave a little bit early, has asked me to extend her thanks to all the city employees who wore purple today. It was literally a sea of purple if you walked through our halls, some in more obnoxious shades than others, some with quasi-disputed purple tones, but it's the thought that counts. So thank you, Alina, and on behalf of Linda Patrick, co-chair, is she co-chair?
Yes.
Co-chair.
She's co-chair.
Co-chair.
Well, she's one of the tri-chairs.
The honorary chair. She extends her thanks to everyone who is thinking of this event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Alina. Next Speaker, Dr. Richard Aspiritu.
Lost my tail.
I lost my place.
There's a whole bunch of seats around.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver.
Just one second. Let's see, there's a lot of empty seats, a few people standing back in the corner. Other than the staff, want to sit down, you may. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, City Council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Aspiritu. I have appeared in front of the City Council representing the Americans with Disability Act. I've talked about parks, I've talked about beeline. Matter of fact, this city agenda has my fingerprints all over it. I'd like to read you something that was published by the U.S. Department of Justice. "The vast majority of law enforcement officers in the country perform a very difficult job with respect to their communities in compliance with the law." I entitled this presentation tonight, Jailhouse Rock. Glendale City Jail title, it's a Type 1 facility. First picture represents the outside of the city jail. Fortunately, there's no parking, disabled parking for people. There's no parking inside the police facility either. Next slide. If you go inside the jailhouse, you'll see that there is a lot of signs, but unfortunately, there are no signs available for the disabled people. This is a new facility. It cost approximately $60 million, and it ran over budget. I don't understand why this didn't comply with it. Next slide. This is the admitting room. This is where they do the fingerprinting and booking. Mr. Aldesco and I had the opportunity of going through, and this is kind of a bad picture, but you can see that the benches don't go up against the walls. That's a violation of ADA. Next picture. The booking areas, the jail, the holding cells, and the jail housing pods are in violation of ADA. All of these are representing telephones, okay? They do not have available telephone representation there. Several weeks, several months ago, unfortunately, Mr. Weaver asked Mr. Zern about the issue regarding how great the jail was, and he talked about the two ADA cells, one which is a holding cell and the other one which is the actual cell itself. The drinking fountains in this cell have the ability to pull under, but there is absolutely no way an individual in a wheelchair has the ability to get a drink there, unless he wants to use the toilet, unfortunately. This is a violation of Title 24, 24.74, 470A3. The visiting areas, this is probably one of the finest facilities I've seen as far as visiting. You have the ability to go in, there's a two-way camera with telephones, and the ability to talk to and visit with the individuals. There's no personal contact. What happens is there's no volume control, there's no TTY capabilities, and this is also in violation of Title 24. The interesting thing about the jailhouse with these various areas, there are five ADA AG or Accessible Guidelines that are violations. There are eight ADA violations and five Title 24 violations in the jailhouse. I do have the greatest respect for the Glendale Police Department. Every time I've appeared before City Council and did not talk about ADA, it was in support of the Glendale Police Department. This issue, I don't believe Chief Randy Adams was responsible for the construction, but somebody was, and they did not make it in compliance with Title 24 or ADA. I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Next Speaker is Barbara Jean, is it NC or?
Why didn't you say it? What's wrong with you, sir?
Someone pass these.
Okay, ma'am, hang on a second. Yusefian, you want Mr. Howard to say something?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff has looked into it, and one, I have to appreciate Mr. Aspiritu's providing staff with these comments. Staff has looked into a number of these areas. There are some areas that need further examination. I can tell you from staff's review that Mr. Aspiritu is not interpreting either ADA or Title 24 consistently, or consistent with our interpretation, and we believe he is incorrect in a number of his assertions. And there are other areas, as I indicated, that we will be looking into further.
Thank you. Okay, Artie, you want to start the clock for her? Sorry for the delay.
That's all right.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver, members of the council, secretary and members of the staff. I'm honored to be allowed to come before you regarding an issue that is vitally important to my overall well-being, and that is electricity. I have been without electricity since the 16th of June. It was based on an erroneous report that I was not living in a travel trailer illegally parked behind someone's fourplex. Had the city known about this, they would not have told the landlords to disconnect the extension cord to the dwelling that I've been living in. The city did not know I was living there, and they therefore told them to pull the extension cord. Later, my attorney got with Sam Ingle about the matter, and I understand that he wrote a letter to the landlords telling them that I could have electricity until the 13th of August. They did not reconnect my electricity. They did not seem to honor that letter in any way. And I, although I am not confined to my wheelchair, my scooter here, I do need it, and it requires charging, it requires electricity to be charged, and I do not have a land phone, and it requires electricity to charge my cell phones, and I vitally need electricity, and I would appreciate it if you could take this matter into consideration and do whatever you feel is appropriate. Thank you.
See, we have her name and phone number. We can talk to her later, or do you want to say something?
We do have it, Mr. Mayor. I have actually personally been in contact with Mr. Graziano, who has been representing her. We're well familiar with the situation. The city actually has gone to somewhat extraordinary lengths to communicate with the landlord's council. This is now an unlawful detainer action between the landlord and tenant. We have indicated to the landlord's council that we have no objection to reinstating the electrical power, but the landlord is concerned about how that will impact the civil action, and so the landlord has refused to do so. We cannot go any further. Essentially, it's a landlord-tenant matter. Electricity is being run from a trailer in the back into a home, and there's a landlord-tenant issue relating to the use of that trailer.
Okay, thank you.
We have indicated that we, as a city, have no problem with the electricity being reinstated for that trailer during the penancy of this action, but the landlord chooses not to do so for reasons, for legal reasons, that only he can explain.
So the courts will have to settle this.
Courts, there's a matter currently pending. In fact, I think, I don't know if you've been given a copy, there's a hearing set for August 23rd, looks like a trial date for an unlawful detainer action.
Unfortunately, there's more than one issue that comes before this council that is totally out of our purview. We have no authority to do anything about, like the cemetery. It's totally away from us. It's mandated or controlled by other agencies, by the court, by the state, by the federal government, and I can understand the misconception that up here before us, and the city can do anything. We can't even tell the school district to not put chain-link fences in their front yards. They're oblivious to that, they don't answer to us, and they can do what they want. It's hard to understand, but that's the way our system is constructed in this country. So I hope you understand when we pass you off, it's not because we don't want to help, it's because we can't. Our hands are tied. Next Speaker is Carol Jean Falco.
Good evening, council members and other dignitaries. I'm Carol Jean Falco, and tonight, I'm representing, we call it the old-timers picnic, but it really isn't for old-timers, it's for everyone. If you have moved into Glendale yesterday, or if you work in Glendale, you're invited. Originally, the old-timers picnic was 100 years ago on South Verdugo Road by Mr. Scher, and it was an old-timers picnic then. It will be Labor Day, September 4, Monday, and the time is from 10:30 to 3:00, and it will be at Casa Dobby de San Rafael at 13:30 Dorothy Drive. I hope everybody knows where Dorothy Drive is. It's a beautiful casa. I happened to be there today. And it will be in the park. It won't be in the casa, it'll be in the park. And everybody's invited. Bring your own lunch, and coffee and water will be provided, and there will be entertainment, and I think you'll have a good time. Everybody, well, let's say, some of the old-timers and the new-timers, they have a ball, and I think you'll really enjoy it. And it's free, and there will be some gifts, prizes, and entertainment. So we hope you can all come, and if I left anything out, Margaret can tell you. So we hope you can all come, and if I left anything out, Margaret can tell you because she's on the committee too. Also, Dave, I just bought three tickets for the Dreaming of Roses.
Thank you.
Downstairs, so I thought you'd like to hear that.
Well, thank you.
And I did remember, Mr. Menucha said, "Wear purple," but I couldn't remember why, so I wore purple anyway.
Well, there's honesty for you.
I couldn't remember.
The power of suggestion.
But I found out. I wore it anyway, because when he said it, well, I just thought, "Well, I have a purple suit, so I'll wear it."
I must say, you look lovely.
Oh, thank you very much. And we hope all of you will come. Everybody in the room, come to the picnic, it's going to be fun, and even maybe, there probably be a few outsiders coming, they're welcome. So I used to think that you had to be here like 50 or 75 years, and I found out that isn't the truth, and that is a beautiful park if some of you have probably never been there, and there's parking, two parking lots, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I have to admit, to be honest, I forgot to wear purple. I got up and our cat was vomiting blood, we had to take her to the vet today, so.
I thought your socks were purple. Don't look now, I'm trying to give him a break.
That's a good try. Your shoestrings are undone, look down. Yeah, I think the comedy routines were done the past on that. Okay, let's follow her up with Margaret Hammond, part two. Old-timers picnic, a little? You'll be there.
Margaret has enough to talk about.
Yeah, I have other things to talk about, but I will be at the picnic, I'm part of the group that, the workers that put it on.
And Margaret's going to keep the bear out so we can come in with the picnic baskets, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll stand guard so he won't come in and swipe your lunches. My name is Margaret Hammond, and good evening, Mayor, members of council, and staff. And of course, I'm back on my routine about the banquet halls and particularly the illegal outside barbecues. And remember, out there, you people that live near them, you call the AQMD at 1-800-CUT-MARG. Now, I'm going to read quickly the thing right from the city's own ordinance, proposed new land use table. And in here, it says air quality. Any activity, operation, or device which causes or tend to cause the release of air contaminants into the atmosphere shall comply with the rules and regulations of the South Coast Air Quality Management District, and with the following. And then it goes into odors. No odorous material shall be permitted so as to be obnoxious to persons of normal sensitivity, et cetera, at a property line or at any point off-site where the odor is greater. And then regarding, you know, people say, "Well, hello," there's a lot of letters in how much, whatever, that they enjoy the banquet halls or what they give. Here's a letter that was written. Banquet halls can hurt the quality of life, and this is in response to a letter from July 28, that banquet halls are a positive thing. She says, "I live next door to one of those halls, and let me tell you about the positive things. The day after the party, the sidewalk is full of cigarette butts and sunflower seeds and shells. During the party, people stand by the windows and talk loud and smoke, and don't tell me to close my windows. When we ask to keep the noise down or move, their reply is, 'This is a public sidewalk.' People throw up on our lawn, people sit on our, on our wall in our driveway, and in some instances, people have sat on our porch. When they cook, the horrible smoke and smell comes in the windows because they cook outside. After the party, there is loud talking, car exhaust, radios blaring, and loud talking. There is nowhere to park on the street when there's a party." And then she goes on to say, the letter writer, Aram Barsumian, wrote, "Events in these halls greatly add to their quality of life. What about other people's quality of life that's affected adversely by these same banquet halls, that have to live with them week after week and weekend after weekend? It's not fair, it's not taking into consideration your neighbors, or what is good for the quality of life of everybody in Glendale. We're back to living side by side, trying to live together in a neighborly way and to be friends with people. But if I had to live next door to something like this, as loud as I complain now, can you imagine how much louder I would be complaining? I'd probably have a megaphone and be standing on the corner of Brandon and Broadway and for days on end telling everybody about what I have to put up." And you're still giving new restaurants, so-called, that are turning into banquet halls, variances on parking, that's going to cause even more troubles for the neighbors surrounding those. They don't have enough parking to start with, they don't have enough parking when they're adding 2,000 square feet, which means 300 people, and the other thing is, the parking, the valets parking on city lots in the city, parking at the public library. I mean, this is not fair to the rest of the people. Do you give that privilege to other businessmen in the city? No, it's not fair, and we all pay our taxes, and if this is costing us money over and over again, something must be looked into, these banquet hall situation. Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you one other that uses all the public parking, and that's 24-Hour Fitness. Can't get them off the streets either. Okay, next speaker, Evelyn Van Orden.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members, staff, and of course, the public. My name is Evelyn Van Orden, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Glendale Youth Alliance, and I coincidentally am wearing purple today, and I'm wearing a 50s skirt, I don't know if you can see it, but. I am pleased to announce an event for the Glendale Youth Alliance. This is our 13th Annual Employees of Tomorrow Luncheon, and as you can see, it's a 50s theme.
Sure, looks familiar.
Yes. This photo, which will be on the cover of the program, was shot at Rocky Cola Cafe with two of our team leaders, and the photo was shot by my husband, by the way, my husband, Mark. And I would like to invite everyone to this event, which will be held on Wednesday, August 23rd, that's a week from tomorrow, at 11:30 to 1:30, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in the Glendale Civic Auditorium. And there will be approximately 500 people at this luncheon. At the luncheon, you will see 160 youth, their families, you'll see civic leaders, sponsors, donors to our Glendale Youth Alliance, and we will be giving out awards, plus we will be giving out scholarships to all of the graduating seniors to help them go to college. And if you'd like to attend the event, the tickets are $25 apiece, and you can RSVP to this phone number, 818-254-5533. And many of the council members have come to previous events, in fact, council member Frank Quintero is a co-founder of the Glendale Youth Alliance, which is a 13-year-old organization, and it's a wonderful, wonderful, fun, fun event to see so many of our youth, ages 14 to 21, who have been trained and are employed in the city, who are encouraged, all of them graduate high school, go on to college, many of them are now employed by businesses in the city, and some of them work for the city of Glendale, we have many of them working for the police department and other city departments. So I've handed out invitations to everyone up here, and I'll have a few more to put in the back of the room. So I hope you can all come.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rock your life, the theme.
Next speaker, Nancy Kent.
My name is Nancy Kent, I'm a resident of Glendale, and thanks to the freedom of speech and freedom of ideas of our city, the community room of the Montrose Branch Library has been rented for a free screening of a political film this Saturday, and I'd like to invite you, Mayor Weaver, and all the council members, and all the members of the public, to see the documentary film called The Great Conspiracy, The 9/11 News Special You Never Saw. This film was made in 2004, it's narrated by journalist Barry Zwicker, and it's details about the unanswered questions about the 9/11 attack. So once again, that's this Saturday, August 19, 2:00 p.m., Montrose Library, 2465 Honolulu. There are no guest speakers, this is the film followed by audience discussion. For more information, call 818-242-4320. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have a number of speakers, and from what I could tell, coming in the door, and who's out here, the next group of speakers are all here in the cemetery, yes, I believe. And as I said, if you're going to get up and speak, again, all we can do is listen, we've heard you week after week, we're doing the best we can to solve this issue, amicably between the owner, and whatever we can do to help facilitate it. But there's nothing that's going to happen here tonight, so if you want to talk, it's a free country, you can, but we know all about the issues at the cemetery. So with that, Mr. Starbird would like to say something.
Well, Mr. Mayor, either, either before or following the comments, I'd be happy, along with my colleague, Mr. Howard, to give you a brief report and tell you what we know so far about the discussions, but you may want to take comment first.
Why don't you do it first, and then see if they all still want to?
Okay. We, as you know, we have been engaged for some time with the cemetery, in the earlier days, preceding and following its closure, monitoring the situation, talking to the attorneys and owners of the cemetery, talking with state regulators about options and the prospect for the future of the cemetery. More recently, as a result of the requests council members have made in response to concerns expressed by residents, some of whom are probably here this evening, working more actively to try, and I'll call it broker, a way in which the owners of the cemetery would allow some limited, I'll call it limited access to the cemetery for the public. Discussions so far have been very productive and positive. There is a hearing in court on Thursday, at which we're not a party, it's actually involving litigation between a number of individuals who own plots in the cemetery and the cemetery owners, but we are, plan on being present at that hearing, and there, hope to, and I'll emphasize hope, that we're able to reach an agreement with the two owners of the cemetery, so that we would be able to have a limited opening of the cemetery on an ongoing basis, and we'll bring you back more details on that. If we are successful on Thursday, our thought is to be asking for the following week, a community meeting of individuals who are interested in the situation, family members, friends, where we can begin to explain what we think we'll be able to accomplish in our discussions with the owners, and hopefully some good news about the prospects for getting the cemetery open again on a limited basis, probably one day a week for a limited period of time, so families can visit their loved ones and pay their respects. So things are looking rather positive at the moment, we'll know more on Thursday.
I have to keep reiterating, we're doing everything we can, it's really out of our hands. You can get mad here, but unfortunately, we are very limited, our hands are tied many ways, we keep trying to emphasize that. How would you like that any?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as the audience may or may not know, as I'm sure the council does know, cemeteries are regulated by the State of California Cemetery and Funeral Bureau. They have published a notice about the situation at Grandview, including a number where to call if you have complaints, and to find out additional information. We have copied these documents and left a number of them in the back for anyone who would like to pick up a copy of this document, we have it in the back for you. And as Mr. Starbird noted, I have staff working on this issue every day, talking to the attorneys, talking with other individuals, talking with state regulators, in an effort to try to solve the problem as directed by the city council. As Mr. Starbird noted, we are making, we are making excellent progress, and I think there, and it's, it's taken a very positive turn, just in the last day, and we think, and we hope, that we will be able to accomplish something in the short run. But the bottom line is, the city of Glendale does not regulate or own this cemetery, it is owned by private parties, and we are attempting to work with the owners to try to assist and get those gates open.
Shh, now, ma'am, we're trying our very best here, and then you interrupt us, and we're trying to explain things to you, I'm sorry, but it's not proper to do that in here.
Mr. Mayor? I have a question from either city attorney or Mr. Starbird. You said that there is a legal action that's going to court this, this Thursday? First of all, where is the court? Is it, is it in Glendale Court, or is it in LA?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is a case currently pending filed by a number of individuals who either own plots.
A action suit?
It is, yeah, we're not, we're not certain if it's been certified yet as a class action, there are five plaintiffs, and some information indicates that it has been certified, we have information that it may not have been. In any event, the case is pending in Central Civil West, which is down, is near downtown Los Angeles.
And how is that, how is that court case going to help us?
The court case will not help us directly, however, we are going to send a representative from my office to that hearing, it is a status conference, and we are going to request the court to allow us to be heard, in hopes that the court will, like we are, our hearts, our hearts go out to everyone who is involved in this, and that hopefully we will be able to touch a cord with the court, and have the court perhaps ask the parties to step in the hall, and hopefully accelerate conversations toward some interim solution in the short run, so that we can help those individuals who do have loved ones at that location.
And in that case, would, would it be advantageous for these people to show up that day at the court? So you would have a large number of people, as the judge sees all these people who are affected, that didn't file, but they're also affected, then it would become very clear to the judge that this is bigger than those five cases. Would that be helpful, or it will not be helpful?
I honestly couldn't say how that would impact the judge, I can tell you that we are prepared to let the court know the impact this is having on the community, not just the five individuals. We have names of all individuals who have come to the city council and made their concerns known, we have a list of all those individuals, we have certain individuals who provided us with written letters, so we are prepared to let the court know that this goes far beyond just five individuals. It's difficult for me to say, and I hesitate to influence individuals to en masse, go down to court for a status conference, where if they get there a little late, they may miss it. I'm not sure if the judge will look at that negatively or positively. We don't have standing to appear in court. We are going to be asking the court to allow us to address the court about this issue, we're not certain how the court's going to react to even us appearing.
Would it be improper for us to give the day, the time, and address where this hearing is heard, and if, let the public choose on their own, if they want to go, they don't want to go?
It's certainly not improper, the only, the only wild card I have right now is because it's in a courtroom at Central Civil West, there was a fire there recently, and the last I heard is that they should have the particular courtroom where this matter was to be heard available on Thursday, but we have to call the court clerk tomorrow to find out.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I can, a couple of things. One is, we're hoping that, that the judge can provide the, I'll call it the last bit of encouragement for the owners to move expeditiously, to agree with us on an arrangement to get some limited opening of the cemetery. I'd be a little concerned with frankly the owners, who are two separate parties, who frankly don't always see eye to eye on these issues, I'm a little concerned with them feeling as if they've been a little ambushed on this issue, and as a result, maybe set us back in some of the efforts we've had, because their responses to date, from both parties, have been very encouraging and positive. We haven't had, we haven't had either one of them say no, I think, as Mr. Howard mentioned to me just this evening, in all of these types of transactions, the devils and the details, and of course, we'll, they'll have attorneys, we'll have attorneys, they'll be sitting down, dotting every i and crossing every t, but I wouldn't want to hurt the good relationship we've developed so far, and the rather positive response we've had from them, by them thinking maybe that somehow through our encouragement, they've been somewhat ambushed at the courthouse. We are taking copies of these council meetings for the judge, we've edited them down so she can get a sense of the extreme emotion that's involved in the situation. There have been several news press articles, we're taking those, we're taking the letters. I would again encourage everybody here this evening, if they haven't left us their name and number by which they can be contacted, because we're keeping a master list of everybody who phones, writes, or comes here. who phones, writes, or comes here so we can contact them. I am anticipating, I think next week sometime, a community meeting where we would invite everybody who has any interest in this matter to come down and we'll give them a much more detailed briefing, hopefully of what will be the good news that we'll have by the end of this week.
Okay. Okay, none of the names I'm calling that I think are here for the cemetery issue, there's no phone numbers on, so as I call your name, whether you want to speak or not, I want you to make sure your phone number is on these cards, okay?
That's if they want to leave their phone number.
If they want to leave their phone number and we'll contact you.
If you want to be contacted.
We are keeping a master list of everybody that expresses an interest.
Again, I hope you understand we're doing everything humanly possible within our legal jurisdiction to get this settled as quick as we can. I'm not sitting on it. I hope you've been listening to what staff has said. So if you want to come up and tell us the same thing that we already know, that's up to you. First speaker, I'm guessing, Silva Zungurdayan. Did I say that right? Z. H. U. N. G. U. R. D. A. R. Y. A. N.
Silva.
Not here? Not speaking?
Silva Zungurdayan.
Zungurdayan.
Zungurdayan, okay.
I pronounced it right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we might give those, the cards for the individuals to city clerk self. Somebody wants to leave us their number, they can come up and put them on their card.
He'll, he'll get them in a minute. Ella Unzian. Kind of close.
Good evening. Well, we appreciate everything you guys have done so far and I understand that we might ruined a good relationship you guys have created with their attorneys and Marsha Howard. But, and again, if you don't know if the, what room the lawsuit is going to be at, we would appreciate if we can get a case number and we can do a research on our own and get the case number and probably go and see what's going on.
Did you want to leave your phone number or?
You have my phone number.
Oh, it's on the back.
Okay.
They're all ahead of me.
Well, you know the date and you know the court, so I guess you can call.
Well, the city attorney can provide her with the case number.
Actually, I'll have to do that. I don't have that in my fingertips. We can get in touch with her and let her know tomorrow. And again, I know it's at Central Civil West, but they had a fire and we have to call the clerk to find out if it's going to be there or transferred possibly to Hill Street.
Central Civil West is not easy to get to.
Okay.
It's, it's near downtown Los Angeles.
And if they want to get ahold of you, how do they do that?
They can call me at five four eight, two oh eight oh.
Two oh eight oh, okay. Okay. And I mean, again, we appreciate everything you have done and you're saying you've done everything possible and somehow you have no authority over it, but as being a resident of the city of Glendale and like everybody else, for us, it seems like we have been ripped off because first of all, my father is buried there and we haven't visited his gravesite for the past two months. And on top of that, we have another plot that we bought. Technically, we're the owners of the plot. We pay, we paid for it. I have the title, yet somehow I have no access to it. So if this was some kind of a credit card scam or whatever, I'm sure you guys would have been involved in this. This is another scam that is going on, yet you guys can't do anything about it.
You're not being rebuffed, believe me.
So what if I pass away and I can't be buried there, yet I paid for it?
You understand exactly what you're saying.
So how come it's?
When you call the city attorney's office, you might want to get the name of the attorney who's representing the plaintiffs in the case that's scheduled on there.
We can do that, but in addition, that is a complaint that the Cemetery and Funeral Bureau, the State of California would probably like to hear. That's why I urge you to pick up this, we left this in the back.
I know that by heart, whatever is here, I have known that for the past two months and I have contacted Sacramento and the only thing they could do is, like you guys are saying, they have no authority over anything. The only thing they could have done was when they shut down the cemetery for illegal activities. At this point, the reason why the cemetery is shut down is because they cannot afford maintenance and I mean, we're willing to pay for, for the maintenance. You know, I'm sure a lot of people are willing to pay on monthly basis, whatever the fee is to cut the grass or do whatever to maintain. I don't think there is, the cemetery requires maintenance too much. It's just the grass and we'll try to keep it clean whoever visits the cemetery. And again, the city of Glendale can do a lot and again, we appreciate it, but there, if I cut the chain and try to trespass, Glendale PD will be there in less than a minute and arrest me. You will be there, but.
Because it's private property?
It's private property, yet I am, I have a title for a plot there.
Clearly understood, clearly understood.
It just doesn't make sense.
I know. It doesn't make sense to you.
Doesn't make sense to you?
No, but I know the legal side, that it's private, that we can't touch it, we have constraints. I have to turn to the attorneys and the legal field to tell me what we can or can't do. We do that on every matter that the city operates under.
Even if I have the title of the plot there and I have my father buried there, I cannot, again, if somebody passes away and we need to bury them in that plot, we cannot.
It'd be the same thing as Forest Lawn. I got my burial plot there and my parents are there. They lock the gate up, it'd be the same situation. We're just working our way through this as quick and as best we can. Please, please understand we're trying to do that. That's all I can ask of you, Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, I might add, what we, I guess that's one thing that's really great about working in local government, the diversity of issues that you get to wrestle with, this being one of those that if you'd asked me a couple of years ago if we'd be wrestling with issues of cemeteries, I'd have said, you're out of your mind. But these are the issues that crop up. We have learned a lot more about the cemetery business. There are examples of what's occurred here in other communities and the problem is they can take a very long time to resolve. There's a situation as grave or more grave than this one in Compton. It's been going on for six years. It leaves people in a terrible position and we completely understand that, but these are very complex issues for which the city doesn't have the ability to frankly wave, wave a wand and make everything okay and go away. We are focusing now on getting some visitation time. That's been our primary focus. I have no doubt we'll be engaged in this issue in some fashion for probably quite some time as it continues to evolve. We are trying to get the gates open, at least on a limited basis. We think we're going to be able to accomplish that sooner as opposed to later. And again, that's been our primary focus for now, recognizing that these things can take a very long time to eventually be resolved. We are going to be meeting with the Forest Lawn folks. They've been very gracious in extending us their time so we can, we can, we can pick their brains frankly on what they might see as some options relative to this. They are the premier operators, owners of cemeteries in Southern California and Mr. Llewellyn, the C. E. O. of Forest Lawn has agreed to come in and meet and we're going to be asking for their assistance. They have extended a great deal of assistance to families who have plots in this cemetery and have loved ones who die and are left in the lurch with no place for a funeral. We understand that they've extended their services in that regard. So we are exploring every avenue we possibly can. Again, our primary focus is how can we get the gates open for some period of time so that residents can know that they can go visit their loved ones. That's been our primary focus, although we'll continue to be engaged in this for, I suspect, it will be a very long time.
Would you repeat the phone number again, please?
Actually, better than that, what I will do is I'll give you the case number and I'll give you the location. You're certainly welcome to call me as well. You did ask for the, for the case number.
Do you have it on your right hand?
I do, I do.
We'll give that to you.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, she's going to write down and give it to the others.
It's case number B. C. three four two, five four nine. There is a status conference in Department three oh nine and again, that's subject to change, Central Civil West, Thursday, August seventeenth at nine A. M.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you. Next speaker is Natella Avakian.
I'm sorry, I'm not good speaking English. I speak Armenian. Yes, we have a problem with our system where yes, no, we're a small town. I think in a sudden, we're a big family. It's a very rough, it's a hard match. You're a cookie, talk about Marsha, I don't know, in China.
Hold on a second. She, she basically says that she has, she has bought a plot since nineteen ninety-eight, three plots and?
No.
No.
We're a class, we're a, we're a.
Okay, there, she bought six plots and apparently the owner of the property has buried three people on her plots.
She's also, I wanted to bring this to our attention because there are issues such as this. She apparently sold six plots. She's been making payments for those six plots. The owner of the property has basically buried three people on three of those six plots while she's still making payments. She has not gotten a deed of trust and she does not own anything, but she continues to make the payments. So she says that there are more than just closing the cemetery issues. There's a lot of inappropriate type of actions. So she wanted to bring this to our attention so we know. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Savak Patroshan. Savak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Councilman. I don't want to take your time on the same matter again. Most of you know me from, from, you know, the different, different events. I, I think what we probably need is some kind of helpline. I'm just suggesting or requesting some kind of helpline because we've got all the answers. Thank you. This is a great city. You're doing really great. I mean, we got all the answers. Things are happening there. You're following up. Other people are following up. State is following up. I think maybe probably we need some kind of helpline so, you know, the people just go, you know, call there or, or get their answers or, or something that instead of, you know, coming here and, and, you know, taking the time, that's probably, that's the only reason that I just decided to come and say. Otherwise, all the, all the issues are answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staff taking notes. Next speaker, David Cabrellian.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I can, that's a very good idea, both on our website as well as possibly a telephone line. Difficult is, right now, we don't have a lot to report on. That could, that could change next week or so, but right now, we don't have a lot.
Repeating what we have sent to those that are watching.
Right, but that, that is a very good idea and we'll look into that first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. This is regarding about the cemetery. Again, I don't want to go through the same thing again, but maybe I could give you a suggestion. Maybe you should impose some kind of a, a rule or regulation that anybody wants to open up or currently has a cemetery where the city has some kind of a department they could audit and do check and balances, just like when you buy a property, a house, there's a lot number besides the address number. So hopefully this way, if, for example, if they have three hundred lots, if they've already sold hundred of them, it could be balanced and checked to see if they are actually sold and they're not reselling the same lot to somebody else. We won't have the same problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the idea.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sapien.
You know, I, I've lived in Northwest Glendale for over eighteen years and for the longest time, it was always my understanding that cemetery was full, there was not any room for any burying sites and the cemetery was only being used for the purposes of cremating bodies and that was it. There's, there are many, many gravesites there that are over a hundred years old. It's almost historic to an extent. I was very, very surprised to get calls from some of our relatives or some of the people that I knew telling me that, you know, some of their loved ones is going to be buried there. And I was like, where? And, and I, I don't know if this individual's actually putting people in sites that's already, I'm hearing it now, that I thought they were probably finding out little walkways or whatever and just putting their, I don't know. And my understanding is, if I'm not mistaken, what the gentleman was saying, the city has no jurisdiction in operation. Isn't the state the one who regulates?
I'm sure, I don't want to get into a big, long discussion here today on this, but.
But briefly, you're right, the state does have jurisdiction over that. In fact, the state is investigating this whole issue about the endowment, the, the Endowment Care Trust accounts, the brokerage practices, including the possible resale of these plots. So they are investigating.
Lot investigation.
All the cemetery regulations are done by the state.
That's correct. We have, we have certain regulations, for example, where cemeteries can locate through our land use authority and our police powers, but the general regulation of the operation of cemeteries is through the state.
But, but Mr. Mayor, in that regard, the idea of, of us having an information line where we can encourage people to contact the number, maybe there's a website in the state where, where I think the state regulators, Department of Consumer Affairs, Scott?
It's the Department of Consumer Affairs Cemetery and Funeral Bureau.
I think they need to hear these stories. I mean, to the extent they hear more and more of these stories, maybe they'll be encouraged to take action.
And I would encourage anyone here who is interested in doing that, and I know some people have already done, done so. We have made copies of the Grandview Memorial Park notice published by the Cemetery and Funeral Bureau. We have copies in the back for anyone who would like them.
Okay. Does anybody got anything more to add up here? Okay?
Yeah, let me, let me just add that unfortunately for the people here tonight, this happens somewhat often in the state of California. This is not the first time that something like this has happened and quite often, it's even worse than what you're experiencing. Some of the operators of these cemeteries, it's a private company and some of the things they do are clearly unlawful. So like that lady that talked about her feeling that they were planting, that they were burying people in her plots, you should follow through, not only with the state, go to the district attorney, go to whatever law enforcement you think is appropriate and is willing to listen to you because this is a practice that happens way too often in the state of California because in my opinion, lack of regulation. They're private companies and they do what they want and so I hope you'll follow through with what you mentioned there at the lectern.
Next speaker, Hazmik Isian. And you're speaking on the cemetery too?
Uh huh.
Okay, yours doesn't have a phone number on it, if you'd like to leave it.
I gave my phone number last time.
Oh, last time? Okay, come right up. Okay, just checking.
Good one, good evening, gentlemen and the lady in the councilor's office.
I'll put your mic closer.
Yes. I'm going to speak about Grandview Memorial Park Cemetery Park over and over and please listen to me as you were listening to everybody and I have some, my opinion about it and there are some people, almost one hundred eighty people are cosigning for this letter. We are living in a technical and scientific advanced era. However, we have forgotten the importance of the human role in our lives when several individuals can walk all over our rights, our values, and our sacredness in order to enhance their wealth, endangering their surroundings. We are talking about the principles of Grandview Memorial Park located at thirteen forty-one Glenwood Road, Glendale, California. It has been almost two months since the doors of the cemetery are closed to the relatives and visitors of the city. There hasn't been a single explanation or clarification in this regard by the principles of the cemetery. The only rumors we hear are that the principals are not financially able to purchase liability insurance and have one employee on the staff to reopen the cemetery. Then again, these are rumors. Are they making fun of us or are they simply ignoring our pain and sorrow? Shall we cry or laugh? Shall we throw a big party when we see the gates of the cemetery reopen? Where is the hidden law that prevents a human being from stabbing another human being's souls, immortalizing his sacredness, the loving memory of his loved ones? Where is the hidden law that prevents a human being from putting his or her financial greed on one jar, weighing in with someone else's moral values on another jar and have greed take over? This is simply called immorality, the result of which is the absurd situation we are in against our will. Thanks to the principles of Grandview Memorial Park and their carelessness toward the clientele, we have started to adopt our rights and freedom in a free country. Today, we are not free to visit our. Today, we are not free to visit our loved ones' graves. We are instead forced to go stand by the closed gates and glimpse through the, its halls in order to catch a glimpse of our loved ones' graves, touch them only with our eyes and leave the closed gates with tears. The only remains of our loved ones, the only physically exciting memory on this earth are the graves, which didn't come free. We have paid thousands of dollars just to dig the hole, then we paid for the stone, we paid an enormous amount of money to plant flowers and clean the cemetery, just so we know our, the loved ones are in a clean and beautiful environment. We did this so their souls can be in light and peace and they can live freely in God's kingdom. We are demanding this peace back. On this occasion, none of any logical explanation can cure our pain. For us Armenian people especially, it is very important, the memory of our beloved ones, children, parents and family memories especially. We have to often leave visit their graves to take care of them, to have a moment of silent solitude and just cry. This is a kind of physical, psychological therapy that helps us to get free of that negative energy which caused, which caused by the grief. This is an old custom that we received from generation to the another generation with our genes. Otherwise, we are convicted to the deep depression with its serious, even fatal consequences. The problem of Grand View Memorial Cemetery Park is not only about the principals, illegal business and the cemetery. It is about us, the Grand View Memorials visitors, customers, alive people who were brave enough by trying, do not give up, to get off the sorrow, to get back to the normal life and everyday tasks without affecting our surrounding by our pain and grief. So we do not expect a standard like long speeches or an explanation with hard, jurispractical terms, that why these gates can't be opened for the public. We did understand already that it is a very complicated case. We are in irregular situation. So the solution supposed to be irregular, non-standard. Strongly believe that you are, the mayor and the councillors of the Glendale city are wise and strong-willed men who can make a fourth to stand by us, the Grand View Memorial Cemetery Park's relatives. Either we have an information from the governor, Arnold Schwarzenegger's, and his wife...
Are you almost done? You've gone over your five minutes.
Yes. This is the just information.
Well, how much more you have, because each person's...
I'm, I'm finishing.
You're finishing? How soon?
Yes. How soon? And here is important information I have just.
Okay. Please wrap it up though.
From the Schwarzeneggers and his wife, Maria Schreider's offices, that on coming Monday, which is August 21st, they are going to discuss this issue about our complaints and we appreciate if you could send a speaker or the attorney who is already in charge with this case to the Sacramento that could protect our rights. And God bless you.
Thank you.
And I'm done. And I have either phone number and it's written. I want everybody to know this phone number. They called us back and they want, if somebody has any question, can call back them by this number, ask the questions to the Maria Schreivers.
Does anybody on staff know about this?
The name of the person.
We don't know anything about it.
We had made with my husband a website with everything what we are going to do. We give the visitors, the relatives of the Grand View Memorial Park here. For you or for the audience?
Hold it up so the television pick, will pick it up.
Point it toward the...
Hey, point it towards us.
Right there. So, right. There you can see it.
We'll, we'll check it out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you have Edward Agopian. Are you speaking on this? Edward? I didn't think he was.
He's the architect.
I know. Jay Rondo?
Oh, he had to leave.
He had to leave. I know.
He most likely is, but there was nothing marked on the card and that's what happens when people don't specify what item they wish to speak on.
I'll save it. I know where he belongs on, on the next item. Jay Rondo had to leave, okay? Next speaker, Vanessa Milano.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yasefian?
While at the subject, I think a speaker brought up an issue about rumors. As we were outside, several speakers approached and said there are rumors out there and I want to put an end to the rumors. One, city is trying to close the cemetery so they can turn it into apartments.
I've heard that one.
Wrong. Two, city is trying to close the cemetery so we can tear it all up and turn it into a park. Wrong again.
Heard them both.
So I just want to let you know, there will be a lot of rumors out there. Just remember, rumors are rumors and leave it at that. City has no intention of doing anything at all.
Thank you. Vanessa Milano?
Good evening, city council. My name is Vanessa Milano. I'm a Glendale resident. Two weeks ago, I spoke about term limits in front of you. I explained that there are moral reasons for keeping term limits in California and for supporting term limits for everyone in political office. Last week, Ms. Nancy Kent suggested that this council should instead support the goals of Proposition 89, the Clean Money Initiative for state elections. It's a good beginning. I believe the city council should stand against dirty money and declare their support for Pop 89. Ms. Kent spoke against term limits, but I've noticed that every Friday evening she participates in the silent vigil against the Iraq war and against President Bush. If we had no term limits for our nation's highest office, President Bush would probably run again. I would guess that if there were a campaign to remove term limits for the presidency while President Bush is still in office, she'd be the first to be against it. Ms. Kent said that having term limits is like removing a chief executive from a private company after a set period of time, but that's not a fair comparison. Company presidents are evaluated on their performance, politicians are not. Elected officials don't get to keep their jobs based on performance. Politicians get elected on the image they portray. Politicians keep their jobs even if drunk driving injuries and death continue. They are not held accountable for increased traffic congestion or bridges in disrepair. We don't measure the number of people without access to medical care, then votes them when out of office. Campaign contributors get to evaluate elected officials on the financial benefits they receive through ordinances or legislation, but the general public gets to evaluate politicians on how they appear to them. The public gets a picture of a, of a politician at a groundbreaking of a city park that he never even promoted. The public then gets a biased view of the candidate rather than factual performance measures. I think it is illogical to promote clean money campaigns and be against term limits. If politicians got elected through dirty money, why should we help their corrupt campaign contributions keep them in office? From what I know about history, one of the greatest legacies that President George Washington gave this country was relinquishing the presidency after two terms in office. He may have been the first man to willingly relinquish the, the leadership of a nation. That is a lesson we must highlight to all history students. We have a moral obligation to sustain the ideals of our founding fathers and the legacy of Washington. We must promote term limits. Thank you.
Next speaker, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council staff. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. And as you know from Margaret Hammond's comments each week, there are a lot of issues regarding the quality of life in the banquet halls. And Vanguard has started to do several things. Periodically, we have greeters here at city councils so that the people coming forward to the council meetings are not intimidated with making comments before this, this group. In fact, earlier today, I spoke with someone who said, "I'd really like to come to a council meeting, but I don't even know where they're at." And I said, "Wow." And I explained to him, I said, "You can come into the parking structure on Wilson between Isabel and Glendale, park in the structure and go down the steps to the, if you're on the main level, go down the steps and you'll look for a building that says 613." And it dawned on me that the only sign that says City Hall is on the Broadway side and maybe people should have some acknowledgement that 613 is really the city hall where this esteemed body meets, the city council. And I thought that gee, wouldn't that be a great idea if there was a sign that said City Hall? Even put little footsteps, the way they do, footprints, the way they do in the hospitals to get you to the city council meeting and that's less intimidating. So the next issue of Vanguard, of course, we'll have that in there. And if you're not getting your issue of Vanguard, you should do so by contacting this information, either email or phone, phone, best way to do it. Now, the other thing that I mentioned was that within the next two weeks on weekends, Vanguard is initiating a citizen patrol for the banquet halls and restaurants on parking and smoke compliance. And they'll be taking pictures so that we can bring that information to you. They'll also be notifying AQMD of smoke violations so that AQMD can send their inspectors. It's one of our methods of getting the information out and making sure that people know how to call 800 CUTSMOG and Vanguard will be doing it. We, we have a number of volunteers that are coming forth and will be initiating these patrols. And it's just a matter, it's not a vigilante issue, it's not in violation of any laws, it's helping you, helping everyone in the city council and management in doing their job just a little bit better, you know, like neighborhood watch. And that's what we'll be providing, that type of information, and we'll be reporting back to make sure that everybody has the information that we do. And that's, of course, that's one of the things that we do with Vanguard. We report on issues, accountability issues, and let the, the public know a little bit more about their city council, about their city government and the city management. And that's what we do. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. Thank you very much.
That concludes our communication. What is next, please?
Moving from adoption of ordinances, seeing as there is none, we will go to action items and at 8A is city manager regarding Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority Presentation Regarding the Route 710 Tunnel Technical Feasibility Assessment. At 8A1 is motion to receive and file the report.
Mr. Najarian, what point would you like to jump in here?
I'd like to perhaps jump in right at the outset, if that's okay with the city manager.
As the mayor give you all that power.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would like to just give a, a brief background. On my, in my role as an MTA Board of Director, I came, I was presented with a feasibility study for the 710 tunneling project. And again, it was presented to our Arroyo Verdugo City Steering Committee and thought it would be a very important and pertinent subject to be brought before city council because it would have many potential impacts to, to the city of Glendale. And we are fortunate enough to have the CEO of Metro, of MTA, Mr. Roger Snowball. Thank you, Roger. Are you going to be doing a presentation? Why don't I invite you up? As well as many staff members, there's Linda Bybee. I know Maureen Michelin, my deputy is here. Shahrazad is in the back. And we have the engineer from Parsons Brinkerhoff here as well, Samuel So. So I appreciate the, the high level of staffing that we have. Roger, welcome to Glendale. I know you live not in Glendale, but in the area, and Glendale holds a very near and dear place to your heart. Can we say anything else to make you fond of Glendale?
Next up, Mr. Snowball. He'll feel what a real meeting is like now.
When did he start there?
Well, mayor and members of council...
Snowball, I'm just curious, when did you start the MTA?
About five years ago. Five years ago, October 1st.
Because I used to work for the Corps of Engineers, so I, I dealt with the MTA quite a bit. It was over with your predecessor.
There are many MTAs.
I'm talking the one in the big luxury tower down there. I watched it being built.
I understand that, Mayor, but I mean, over time, MTAs changed.
Oh, yes. I understand. Sorry, I just...
This is the new MTA.
Well, it's the new MTA.
But the mayor, members of council and Director Najarian, it's really a pleasure to be here. I do live but 4.8 miles away from this building, which is really nice. It's actually closer than the city hall of Los Angeles to my house. And we do come this way a lot because the traffic's better here than the part that the, that I happen to live in. So it's really, it is a pleasure to be here and to be with you and to really express to the council our appreciation for Director Najarian joining the Metro family and being a, a very important part of it. We appreciate his, his insight, his understanding of, of these kinds of things. He's an excellent board member and he will represent the city and the region very, very well. We're very happy to, to have him with us. This, this particular issue though is one that has a, a big impact on the city of Glendale because Interstate 5 is a big, a big problem. Most of the time now, it used to be only during the peaks, but the peaks are getting bigger and bigger. And the, the 710 gap closure has been an issue that's been going on for 40 years or longer. And when I first got here, five years ago, I met with Caltrans, the Caltrans director and Doug Thaling, and Doug usually is with me on his presentations, but he called to Sacramento today, so he wasn't able to be with us, but he would normally be here to, when we brief the cities on, on the study of, of the 710. But he and the director at the Caltrans at the time said that they were really having difficulties with this project, that it was in the makings for 40 years, there was all kinds of issues over it, and that they needed to have a, take a, a new look at it and would we take on that responsibility. And not knowing any better, I said, "Well, sure, you know, just another highway project." I, I soon learned that it was much more than just another highway project. But as we got into looking at it, and particularly the, the area that we're serving, the, the very much importance of the, of the project, this is still the biggest project in all of Los Angeles County as far as doing the most good for relieving congestion and doing the most good as far as cleaning the air from a pollution standpoint. There's no other bigger project from that standpoint than this project. That's why it's really kind of important that we get moving on it and get it, and get something done with it. And the situation, of course, isn't getting any better. So we, we started looking at it, looking at the terrain. The terrain does create, create some challenges because you'll see in the presentation, there is a huge vertical distance in this, in this particular area too. And the old Caltrans project really showed some huge cut and covers, that were, were some very large U-wall sections that went very deep. And nowadays, if you go over 25, 30 feet, then you're looking at other alternatives such as tunneling. The tunneling options have really come around a lot, particularly in the last 10 years, last 10, 15 years, much of this is going on in Europe, in Asia, where they're really pushing the envelope for, for developing tunneling types of projects. So as we got to looking at it, I asked my tunnel, tunnel experts, and we do have tunnel experts because we are building a, a bored tunnel currently, if this was feasible to look at it from a tunnel standpoint. And he came back preliminary and he said, "Yes, it is feasible." But then we needed to, to look at traffic, we need to take a look at all kinds of other things. So in our, with our, with our partnership with SCAG and with Caltrans, we embarked on the study that we want to present to you today. It's, it's a first step. It's not meant to be anything else than sort of paving a path forward for us to take a look at and see if we should take the next, next step. Obviously, anything that happens there is going to be a very, very expensive project, but also it has, clearly has very important, it can have a very important impact on our communities. So this, this study has been commissioned primarily by Metro. We've paid for it and worked very closely with the others to, to bring it to you today. And we wanted to, to show you what it, what it's looking like and to get your input into the process and help us figure out what our next step is going to be. We brought in a consultant to do this and Sam So is here today to make the presentation to you. And again, it's a pleasure being here. I'll stick around for a while after the presentation if there are additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snowball. Mayor Weaver, members of council, thank you again for inviting us to share with you the findings of our technical feasibility study and...
Just give your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Sam So, project manager with Parsons Brinkerhoff, consultant to the MTA. Let me tell you first about the study objectives. Let me tell you first about the study objectives. We were really tasked with focusing on, does a tunnel provide a viable option to close the seven ten gap? What we were really focused on is technically, operationally, financially, is it physically feasible? From the perspectives, can you physically provide a tunnel as a viable option environmentally? Can you move forward? What are the issues with tunneling? Financially, how do you deal with a tunnel project of this magnitude? Our study area you see here in the gray shaded area, really from the terminus of the seven ten, really at Valley Boulevard, all the way up to California, is really our study area. What we see before you are a number of different alternative alignments. These alignments are really for comparison purposes. As you get into further analysis, if this project were to be advanced, certainly within the environmental documents, you'd be looking at a number of different other alternatives. So these are for study purposes, really trying to close the gap. Physical feasibility. Trying to get, not familiar with this mouse here. Keeps coming back here. All right, I will use the- All right, that's the problem. I'll go back to where I was. Okay. From the physical feasibility perspective, first thing we needed to analyze is the traffic. What does the seven ten gap closure, what will it take to provide an acceptable level of service? What we focused on is using the SCAG twenty thirty model, we focused on a three lane in each direction as well as a four lane in each direction. Does that provide the adequate level of service? We also focused on, should truck traffic be allowed to use ultimately the, thank you, should truck traffic be allowed to use the seven ten tunnel if it were to move forward? We were also asked to, from a historic perspective from Caltrans, what is viability of providing an interchange at Huntington Drive? Once we did all this, what we wanted to do is address, what were the impacts to the adjacent freeways? The number of trips currently, since there is no continuous seven ten, use adjacent freeways, they use the five, they go to the two, they use one thirty-four, they use a number of local arterials. So what is the impact of providing a seven ten gap on the freeway system as well as the local arterials? What we have before you is a preliminary profile of the tunnel, and it's really from the left of the screen is south going north to the right of the screen. What you see before you is on the left side, Valley Boulevard is where the seven ten freeway currently terminates near Cal State Los Angeles. What would be necessary is to re-profile that section of existing freeways so that the freeway actually goes below Valley, goes below the railroad tracks, and then below Mission, so it can enter a tunnel portal in the vicinity, just slightly north of Mission as a preliminary engineering perspective. Then you end up with a tunnel section that goes from fundamentally Mission Avenue to somewhere slightly north of California, a distance of about twenty-one thousand linear feet, roughly four miles in distance, and then you daylight somewhere between California and Del Mar. The tunnel profile is approximately a hundred feet below the surface grade, so the top of the tunnels to the surface grade is at a minimum cover of approximately one hundred feet, and that provides for the stability of the tunnel. What we were analyzing, again-
What was the grade?
One, two percent.
Oh, it's one to two percent, and varies from the preliminary engineering, depending on how long you're going to extend that. So from the preliminary perspective, what we were addressing from the traffic perspective is we need to provide approximately four lanes of traffic in each direction to provide a good level of service. What you see on the left-hand column is really a twin bore tunnel. We would have four lanes of traffic accommodated by a top and bottom level, two lanes of traffic in each direction, northbound, southbound. This will be constructed by a tunnel boring machine concept, which I'll talk about shortly. The center concept is using a different type of construction technique called sequential excavation method, and this provides for more of an elliptical shape. And the advantage here is it provides the four lanes of traffic on a single level. The third column on the right is a three-lane option. The working group suggested we explore this to see if there were some advantages where we can use two smaller tunnels and a larger center tunnels to provide the four lanes of traffic. And upon examination, this really didn't offer us a clear advantage. So really, we're focusing on the center column and the right column.
When I was-
Yes, Councilman.
When I was a member of SCAG, we discussed this issue, and there was some talk about possibly designing it in such fashion to have the three tunnel scenario. The center tunnel was going to be basically financed by truck companies because they wanted to be able to use that to move truck traffic. And the other two tunnels would have been used for passenger vehicles only. And that was a method that was discussed by the truck incorporated companies that were very interested in actually putting in some of this money because at the time it was three billion dollars, and I see it's climbing up. I have a tendency to know by the time you get into it, it'll be seven billion dollars if you're lucky. So was that brought into consideration, or you guys abandoned it for technical reasons?
No, you know, we didn't necessarily abandon it. Fundamentally, if there is that history where that center tunnel may be used for truck traffic, right now, the feasibility study also addressed, should trucks be allowed to use the seven ten gap closure? So one of the funding scenarios, depending on what you want to use in terms of the, what type of fleet mix you use, is it open to all traffic or just restricted to passenger traffic? One of the sources of potential finance is trucks. Certainly, there is a number of federal programs that provide for funding because of trucks. So if that has an advantage, our study was really focusing on, should this advance? So this is really a decision document, so maybe it's too premature to dismiss that right column completely.
Right, because that's, that's, that was also discussed, part of it is, as part of the two thousand four's RTP, this basically would have mitigated a lot of issues with the congestion issue. As you know, more truck traffic is eliminated off of one thirty-four, or five, or two ten. The better, more flow of regular vehicles would have been, and also it met some of the requirements for, for our air quality, too, so.
Excellent point. Thank you, Councilman.
Please carry on.
Focusing on the left-hand column, again, this is a closer view of the twin bore tunnel. Generally, we've looked at a number of different concepts. Again, this provides for two full lanes of traffic in both the top and bottom level on both tunnels, provides for a full breakdown lane, and generally, it's between forty-eight and fifty-seven feet in diameter, and this particular section provides for full standard at a fifty-seven feet. You also see a line that connects the two tunnels. That's really a safety refuge area. They would be located approximately every six hundred feet should there becomes an incident and people need to evacuate, so that you have a safety refuge area. Again, this is a closer cross-section of the elliptical shape. And again, this is using the segmental excavation, or sequential excavation method. And again, the advantage is providing the four lanes on the single level, and again, you have that safety refuge connecting the two tunnels. Additionally, what we needed to focus on is what is the subsurface conditions? What are the geologic conditions? We cross a number of falls, we have a different soil conditions, we have varying levels of water. And fundamentally, what we have found was the ground, although not ideal, it is actually suitable, is very comparable to materials that have been used for other tunnels that Metro has implemented as part of the subway system. Another consideration is the general size of the tunnel. Again, we've talked about, we need to provide for four lanes in each direction, what's the alignment? Again, we talked about the geologic subsurface conditions, what's the impact on, on surface structures, compatibility of the ground support, safety economy. And again, what we've focused on is three general construction techniques for the tunnel. Again, the top one is those round shapes, the tunnel boring machine, where you have a large excavator, and I'll show a photograph of that shortly, where you construct that full excavation with that full diameter face, the sequential excavation method where we, we actually excavate smaller sections to create the larger opening, and then cut and cover. Although we don't believe there will be a significant amount of cut and cover, you would use a cut and cover, as Mr. Snobel indicated, where you have a shallower profile, where you have the depth of, from the tunnel to the surface, shallower. We believe we can minimize this because the cut and cover can be disruptive to the community, because obviously you would be doing that full excavation and then putting a cover over it. So we're going to predominantly focus on the tunnel boring machine technique and the sequential excavation method. Again, for the tunnel boring machine, this is the type of machine that we would be utilizing for a seven ten tunnel, using a tunnel boring machine. This is a tunnel boring machine that is currently in use in Madrid, Spain, and actually it just completed about a two point four mile section in Madrid, Spain. They have a ring road called the M thirty motorway, very comparable to what we're seeing currently. That's approximately fifty feet in diameter. Looking at that yellow section, that's about the diameter of the tunnel boring machines that's currently in operation, constructing the East Side Light Rail project.
And what distance will that achieve? Hourly, daily? What's its cut?
It depends on the really ground conditions. On the east side, they're achieving, I believe, sixty to seventy feet a day.
Wow.
But again, in terms of the seven ten, we don't have enough subsurface conditions to really, we're approximately, we're using a very conservative number of about thirty to thirty-five feet a day.
Now, the documentary that I saw, a machine was being used, and at the tail end, they were assembling the concrete behind it. So as it went right along, it left a completed-
This type of machine, Councilman Quintero, provides for the section liners, exactly what you're describing. I didn't provide for brevity of time, I didn't provide a photograph of that, but actually, as you do the excavation right behind it, you have the segment liners, and so you almost have a finished tunnel, although there's much, much more, more work to be done here.
Is this type of equipment continuing to evolve all the time?
The advancements has been tremendous, as Mr. Snobel indicated, over the last fifteen years in particular. When Caltrans was looking at the prior service alternatives, tunneling really was not an option because you didn't have a large enough diameter.
Because the line that, the line that came north of the subway, went under the LA River, I was working on the permits then with the Corps. I just wondered, the equipment then is nothing compared to this today.
No, absolutely not.
Just ten years.
These are state-of-the-art, and, and really, this is about a fifty-foot diameter machine.
Nothing like that there.
If we were to provide for the full standard Caltrans, full twelve-foot lanes, full ten-foot shoulders, emergency walkways, we showing a cross-section diameter of about fifty-seven feet. That's slightly above the, the current state-of-the-art. So this is really the largest machine. We believe by the time we get there-
It'll be there.
-that advancement, the tunnel experts say it will be there. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
How's this machine powered?
It takes a lot of electricity. These are custom-made machines.
So it's electric motor-driven?
Yes, that is correct. This is actually a cross-section of the M thirty motorway in Madrid, Spain. What they're providing for is three lanes of traffic on a single level. What they're using in that lower level on that left cross-section, that is, they're providing their concept for utilities and also for emergency vehicle access. They don't have the same traffic demand as what we have on the seven ten. And again, you see, connecting the two tunnels is that safety refuge area, that you have both the upper and lower levels. Again, tunnel boring machines and tunneling in general is not new to Los Angeles. Below is the East Side Light Rail TBMs currently in use and actively, and being a very successful program. To date, there has been no noticeable surface settlement due to those machines. Again, if you refer back to the photo I, of the Madrid machine, that yellow portion is comparable in diameter to this blue and red machine, which is about twenty-two to twenty-one feet. The tunnel boring machines on the top photograph is actually constructing water tunnels, or water and sewer tunnels, and those are the interceptor tunnels throughout Los Angeles and over twenty miles have been constructed, kind of the stealth program that no one has heard about. Let's focus on the other type of construction for tunneling, sequential excavation method, and one picture is worth a thousand words. So that top photograph on the left really provides how you would excavate that larger elliptical section in various sections, one, two, three, and four, those are the sequence that you constructed. And so you have a different type, instead of having a full excavation with a tunnel boring machine, the advantage here is if you run into the mix of different types of soil conditions, it's very easy, readily, you can change your cutting heads, whether you have soft materials or hard materials, and so that's one of the advantages, as well as providing the four lanes on a single level.
Do you do them concurrently? Looks like you may be doing-
You're doing those ones concurrently, and the threes concurrently, and then you do the, then you do the individuals, the, the two, four, five, six, and so-
Sequentially, not concurrently.
Yes, sequentially. Yes, you do. That is correct.
The ones you bore, right? You use a machine to bore the one section?
Oh, you, you can use these smaller pieces of equipment, and within each of these segments, you see on the top there an excavator, so you're not using that larger, single tunnel boring machine, you're using smaller excavators, and they're generally called road headers.
Road header, okay.
Again, the feasibility study was asked to consider the impact of a Huntington Drive interchange. Our basic assumption for this feasibility study was we were going to leave the profile of the roadway deep. Again, as I mentioned, there's about a hundred foot of cover from the surface to the top of the tunnel. So what that means is to provide an interchange ramp, you provide from that hundred foot below the surface level all the way to the surface, and with the general highway grades, they end up being very long ramps. And if you're going to provide for two on-ramps, two off-ramps for full service, you end up building some very long additional tunnels. It is physically feasible to construct the, these ramps, however, they do require additional right-of-way. They, they do complicate the ventilation because you end up with having an opening at either portal end and an opening at the Huntington Drive interchange. So physically, we can accommodate a Huntington Drive interchange, but there are some constraints to it. Operations of the tunnel. The paramount thing for a tunnel operation of this magnitude is public safety, ensuring that the tunnel is operated in a safe manner, in efficient manner, whether it's an incident response, providing emergency responders as soon as they occur, monitoring the air quality, are there any types of incidents to be able to provide? So this would, is a typical type of tunnel. You see all the monitors located throughout the control center. This would be what is known as a manned tunnel, where you'd have twenty-four hour surveillance throughout the year to ensure that the, the operation is safe. So what you're looking at is providing for changeable message signs to monitor the, the traffic if there are any incidents, make sure that you have any incident response that can be taken care of very quickly. You want to make sure that you can have communications to emergency responders, they may be onsite, they may be offsite. If you're going to be looking at truck operations, ensure that the trucks are in a, an exclusive lane. Look at the fire suppression systems, whether they're fire hydrants, deluge systems, the ventilation to ensure for air quality, freshness, incident response. In many tunnels, what they found is cell phones don't work because you're deeply under the ground, so there are ways that you can amplify that to ensure that your cell phones work in addition to the call boxes that would be located throughout the tunnel. Environmental feasibility. Again, what we did in the feasibility study is not an environmental document, but really to identify what are the likely environmental issues that would be encountered associated with tunneling. So the environmental issues is certainly you're going to provide for noise, air quality, historic properties, aesthetics, hazardous waste, soil disposal, storm drain, and there's a number of other environmental issues that would be necessary to evaluate if the project moves forward. But you need to look at them not only in the permanent condition for the full operations, but what is the interim in-construction operation impacts? So noise, noise is a big issue for the community in terms of being a good neighbor and how you provide for this project. So what you may look at is, and you may consider a successful technique, is identify the construction impacts, but also identify the long-term impacts. And if possible, you provide your permanent noise attenuation right up front. Don't wait and, and just create a construction problem, but mitigate that construction noise as well as the long-term noise. There are different types of materials that you can use to mitigate the sound, non-reflective materials, softer materials, if you're using your mechanical and electrical equipment, how can those be mitigated? Can you use soundproofing equipment, thicker walls, absorb, sound absorption materials, regional air quality, as Mr. Snobel indicated also. Although not part of our feasibility study from the SCAG model, we know that the seven ten provides the greatest mobility improvement, which therefore provides the great regional impacts in terms of the benefit of the project. However, there's a number of issues that still need to be addressed in terms of cleaning, air cleaning technologies. A number of people have talked about scrubbers, and how do you deal with the collected materials and emissions from the tunnel? The scrubbers are formerly known as electrostatic precipitators, and currently, within the United States, there is no tunnel in the United States that uses scrubber technology. A number of projects offshore in Asia, in Europe, Australia is looking at the scrubber technology. In Spain, the, the same project I just showed you, they're looking at, how do they implement the scrubber technology? It's an emerging technology. Right now, the scrubber is really focused largely on the collection of particulate matter, so it's very effective in collecting particulate matter, PM ten, PM two point five. It doesn't do much right now for carbon monoxide and the other spectrum of emissions, but just like tunneling technology, scrubber technology continues to advance, so if, again, this project moves forward, we should probably look at the application of scrubber technology to facilitate this tunnel. Again, a big issue is the aesthetics of the project. What do the portals look like? What do the, the vent stacks look like? And how can you mitigate that? How do you fit it within the community fabric around the tunnel location? So what you would be looking at, how do you mitigate- So what you would be looking at, how do you mitigate that? How can you soften the look? Are there key architectural treatments that reflect community values? So I'm going to walk you through a number of just renderings in terms of how you can mitigate the tunnel appearance. And the tunnel doesn't necessarily need to be an industrial-looking tunnel. The vent stacks don't have to be industrial-looking stacks, chimneys. You can mitigate a tunnel by heavy use of landscaping. You can provide different types of treatments rather than just around tunnels that you see portals in this example. Here's a different... a couple of different examples of how you can use different types of landscaping and different types of facial treatments for the portals. Another treatment on the top. And the bottom, what I really wanted to show you there and share with you is when we're dealing with the tunnel boring machine concept, again, what I mentioned was you have two lanes of traffic on top and bottom in each of those cells. So prior to entering the tunnels, you really need to go from that single level, you have to bifurcate the roadway, and then actually put them on top of each other. So you have a stacked roadway going into the tunnels. And as a real-world example, up in Seattle, Washington, this is the Mount Baker Ridge Tunnel. It's a bi-level tunnel. This actually provides for five lanes of traffic. So you have the top and bottom level going in, heavy use of landscaping. There's actually a number of homes, and there's a park above this particular tunnel. It's a much shorter tunnel than what we're looking at, but it gives you an example of that stacked roadway concept. And again, in terms of the ventilation and the vent stacks, what we have in terms of the ventilation concept is we would have a vent stack at each portal, and then ideally there would be one additional tunnel somewhere around the midpoint. So there would be three is what our preliminary analysis tells us, but there could be as many as four. There could be one at each portal plus one located instead of at the center point, at the third point. So a portal, third point, third point, portal. So there... we believe there will be three, but there could be as many as four vent stacks. And these vent stacks, conservatively talking right now, we're hoping that the scrubber technology will be applicable. But right now, without any other type of mitigations, they can be up to a hundred feet in height, perhaps as much as thirty to forty feet in diameter. So they're large structures. And how do you hide a structure like that? How do you make it fit within the community fabric? The first thing is the ideal location. Where do you actually put the vent stacks? But there's other ways to hide them. The vent stack, again, doesn't necessarily have to be an industrial-looking chimney. You can actually provide architectural treatments, make them look like a clock tower, a water tower. You can use heavy vegetation to hide them completely. There is certainly California vegetation that will grow to the height of a hundred feet to actually hide these things. So again, there's a number of different techniques that you can use to... But the most important thing is the actual location of where you put these vent stacks within the community. For the financial feasibility, the range of cost is, for construction cost only, two thousand six is two-point-three billion to three-point-six billion dollars. And that is really representative of this array of nine different alternatives. That's why you have such a widespread. However, really, the financial feasibility, we as a consultant, you really need to look at not only this program, but you need to compare it against the full range of priorities within the L.A. Basin. So it would be difficult for us to make a determination in whether or not this project is truly financially feasible. So we'll leave that to the agencies. In conclusion, again, we were asked to focus on feasibility from the physical perspective, environmental, and I just mentioned that we can't really comment on the financial side. But from the physical side, it appears physically feasible based upon the tunneling techniques, the ground conditions are suitable for tunneling, the traffic forecast, we can provide the four lanes of traffic that provides the adequate level of service in the year 2030. Again, we saw the tunnel technologies are emerging, and in France and in Paris and other places, there are tunnels of this magnitude. Generally, from a traffic perspective, the tunnel does provide benefit for the adjacent freeways, although, as you would suspect, along the seven-ten, traffic goes up higher. So seven-ten south of the ten actually goes up because the gap is in place. And where the traffic goes through the seven-ten near the two-ten, one-thirty-four, that traffic would actually go up, but the other surrounding freeways are actually improved. Additionally, the arteries generally have an overall benefit of the tunnel. And the interchange at Huntington Drive, as I mentioned previously, it is physically feasible, but there's other challenges from the environmental perspective. From the environmental side, again, a lot more work has to be done to truly address each and every environmental issue. But at least from what we've identified, there are proven means and methods to eliminate, mitigate, or minimize those environmental impacts. Again, the big issue would be aesthetics and particularly the vent stacks. Again, careful camouflaging and location of those vent stacks is the most important issue. So again, not to diminish the environmental impacts, but from the feasibility perspective, we don't... we have concluded that there are no insurmountable environmental issues that would preclude further consideration of a tunnel option. And so fundamentally, from an environmental perspective, although a lot of additional work has to be concluded, we believe that the tunnel option can be made environmentally feasible. Focusing just slightly on the Huntington Drive interchange, again, from the environmental perspective, it would require significant additional right-of-way. You would have additional surface disruption at Huntington Drive. The additional traffic on Huntington Drive due to the interchange would... you'd really seriously have to consider whether or not you need to widen Huntington Drive, which may change the character of Huntington Drive. So there are certainly significant challenges to Huntington Drive interchange. Physically, it can be accommodated. This has been a series of meetings that we have conducted to date. We were in your neighbors in Pasadena just yesterday, a series of public meetings to disseminate this information, the findings of the study. Additionally, the public members can visit the MTA website to get the full reports, provide comments. We're looking to receive comments by September fifteenth. And that concludes my formal remarks.
Mr. Secretary.
A couple of questions. How do you evacuate people? Let's say there's an earthquake. How do you get people out of the tunnel? That's one thing. And the second question is, on your stacks, are they active or passive? Do you actually have fans that pull the thing out? And what happens in case of a power failure? How would you deal with the smog?
Okay. First, in terms of how you would evacuate the tunnels in case of a seismic event. Within the scope of the feasibility study, we didn't address evacuation plans. Again, that's going to be a very critical element for future studies if the concept is to be advanced further. But generally, what you would be looking at is, in terms of the seismic condition, it depends on what you want to accomplish. You need to establish what is the goal. For the MTA metro subway tunnels, the intent is to ensure public safety. Again, there may be an event... So you're really looking, the biggest seismic event and the fault that we're looking at relative to the seven-ten is the Raymond Fault. That's the most active. All those are... there's a number of other faults. So really, what you need to do is look at the displacement. And again, you... I don't want to get into the real technical terms unless you want me to get into that.
No, I just want to know if you have thought about that. And it doesn't have to be a seismic effect. I mean, it could be a terrorist activity, it could be all kinds of issues. And you decide, you know, it could be some crazy things, you know, you end up having a fire because a truck catches on fire or whatever, and you have to evacuate. How do you deal with that evacuation?
Yeah.
We've seen enough movies about horrible things, what happened. So how do you deal with that?
Well, typically, in a tunnel environment, there are several redundancies. You have, in each of the tunnels, you've got an upper deck and a lower deck. So part of the escape, if there's something that happens and you have to evacuate the tunnel, first of all, that control room sees everything and controls everything, controls hatches, talks to people, does whatever they do. If you want it, you're going to tell people to evacuate, to go this stairway, go upstairs, go up another five-hundred feet, and go take the cross passage over to the other side. And the other side is a safe harbor. There's a lot of safe harbors in the tunnel because incident, even an earthquake, is only going to affect one part of the tunnel. So the question is, how do you get somebody into another portion of the tunnel? And that's how you plan all that into it, just like we do in the subway tunnels here in Los Angeles. So there's a lot of...
Well, in a scenario that you have a single tunnel, it's split down the middle. You have that middle section, which is concrete platform, I am assuming, or whatever it is.
It's a very substantial...
Let's say there's a major earthquake and it collapses. It closes the one below, and you can't use the one on top. How do you get people out?
In either direction, you have a cross passage...
You have to back up.
You go back, back or forward, wherever you are, to the next cross passage and get into the... or go out the end. I mean, there's...
And do you have displays inside the tunnels that tells people what to do, and so you can contact them that way?
It's a man situation in the control room all the time, and you have...
And what do you do in case of a power failure?
Backup.
Do you have backup generators that will be able to run the fans and all that stuff?
It's a redundant system.
And you have fire suppression inside the tunnel also?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a little different in a highway tunnel, because in a highway tunnel, you do bring in things that are combustible. In a subway tunnel, there's nothing in the tunnel that'll burn, except for what people have on them. In a highway tunnel, you do have to understand what a blast can do and that sort of thing. But these are very, very tough, hardened types of situations that would take an awful lot to...
I have another question. On your SEQUA documents, how far-ranging will they be in looking at impacts? For instance, if you put that in, it's going to start putting a loading on the two-ten freeway through Glendale to Locking and a Flint Ridge, because that is an unutilized freeway, and the trucks would just love to go that route. We're going to start having noise impacts. We've had a lot of requests for sound walls up there. So will your SEQUA document go as far as looking at the impacts on the two-ten due to the increased traffic loading and have to address them with mitigation measures, for instance, sound walls?
When we actually get into the point of actually defining this project, the definition of the project will be farther than where the gap is. Because you've got situations on the both southern part of seven-ten where there aren't sound walls, there'll need to be sound walls. And going up farther north, there will be two. So the actual definition of the project will probably be a longer segment than what you're seeing here. And those have to be dealt with in the SEQUA documents.
Yeah, I just pointed out, if we would take in the two-ten, because I'm sure if you haven't, you'll hear from Locking and a Flint Ridge.
And we also need to really much more understand what the effects of traffic are going to be. Let me go back to the truck issue. The truck issue can still be there. You could do a whole nother tunnel, parallel to these tunnels, and tow it for the trucks because there obviously is a big economic value for trucks to be able to get through this area quickly. So that could still be something that would be done concurrently or different and be paid for through a whole different kind of funding mechanism.
And just mitigate the impacts.
Because right now, we're still contemplating this is not actually an interstate, and it probably wouldn't allow big trucks on it. But we have to plan for what the impact would be anyhow.
Because when we discussed this at SCAG, the deal was there'll be three tunnels, one going in each direction for vehicles. And the one in the middle, which will be basically a four-lane highway, two going one way, two coming the other way, and that would be trucks only. And that separates the trucks from regular passengers and also takes trucks away from a lot of city streets.
That was when we were thinking that three lanes would do it. And what we've concluded through this study is it's going to take four lanes.
They've talked about this route for thirty, forty years. Be still talking about for the next ten, twenty.
By then, it will be six lanes required.
Obviously.
At this rate.
In terms of earthquakes, Tokyo and Mexico City have had numerous earthquakes, and the tunnels there haven't had any issues.
Yeah, really, one of the safest places to be during an earthquake is in a tunnel. The only place that would really be affected is if there was actually a fault that was running more or less perpendicular to the tunnel, and you actually got a displacement. Same thing we deal with on the rail side. On the rail side, what we do there is where we know we have a fault, we over-excavate so that if you do have a problem, it's easy to get into and fix it. It's easier to get in and fix it. But you know it's there, and you over-excavate, and you plan for it. It may never happen, but if it does happen, you know it's there.
Okay.
You know, I think Mr. Weaver hit on some of our concerns, perhaps some of the greater concerns, because this tunnel isn't being built in our backyard. That's South Pasadena's concerns, and perhaps are going to be more sensitive to some of the tunneling issues and the modes and the manners and the ventilation stacks. And I see one of my colleagues from South Pasadena Council is here. Welcome to Glendale as well. And I think that the folks in Glendale and the surrounding communities are going to be most concerned with the increase in traffic and truck flow. When they made the connector to the fifteen, the two-ten to the fifteen, we saw a dramatic increase in the nature of our quiet little two-ten freeway. We had a lot more trucks, not that it's unbearable, but certainly a dramatic increase. So I think one of our main concerns would be the increase in the truck traffic going north, swinging around on the two-ten, eventually hitting the five. So that's something certainly that we're concerned about and would like to keep our eyes on, as well as the accompanying noise and pollution impacts on it as well. But it certainly is an ambitious project, and, you know, there's nothing that an engineer can't do. Is that what you say, Mr. Weaver?
Exactly.
Give them enough money, and they'll...
That's it.
They can do anything. So it certainly is quite impressive, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Yes, there's a motion, A1.
I'll move A1.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded. No discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian...
Yes.
Quintero...
Yes.
Eusefian...
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Thank you, and what is next?
Action item eight-B is City Treasurer regarding City Treasurer's annual investment report for fiscal year oh-five, oh-six. Eight-B one is motion accepting report.
Do we really want to...
Move eight-D one.
Thank you. Sorry, sec... It's moving seconded.
Do you have cards?
Nope.
No?
No discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Eusefian...
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Thank you for staying for the seven-ten presentation. It was a good report, very clear and concise.
Yes. Yeah, wait. Treasure broken.
See? Almost went without...
At eight-C, I was just trying to see where Councilmember Najarian went. I guess he's in the back. At eight-C is City Treasurer regarding City Investment Policy for fiscal year two-thousand six, two-thousand seven. And at eight-C one is Resolution Adopting City Investment Policy.
Move eight-D one.
Second.
Good, I guess we're going to send you home early. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Eusefian...
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Now you can go home. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Next, please.
At eight-D is Fire Chief regarding General Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. At eight-D one is Resolution Adopting the Glendale Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
I'll move eight-D one.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Do you have cards?
No cards, and we've all read this, I'm sure.
That's a pretty heavy document, that probably.
So with that, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Manukian, Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Eusefian...
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Good night, Parde Department. Next, please.
At eight-E is Director of Administrative Services.
I think they learned if they make the book heavy, we just pass it.
That's right.
Covered everything there is.
Move right along before Mr. Najarian gets back.
At eight-E is Director of Administrative Services regarding Proposed Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for a Salary Supplement and Continuation of Certain Benefits for City Employees Who Are Members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and Are Called Up for Active Duty. At eight-D one is an ordinance for introduction.
Okay, just a minute. Okay, just a minute. You want us to go ahead without?
Delay.
Okay. Somebody want to introduce the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be more than happy to introduce the ordinance at 8E1.
Take care of our guys that are over there. Thank you.
By the way, how many people do we have over there now?
One.
Just one?
We have one now. Hope we get one back.
We hope we get him back.
Next, please. I'm going to throw all the others in.
You look fast when I leave.
At 8F is Action Item Director of Public Works Regarding Building and Safety Plan Checking Services. At 8F1, Resolution Increasing Funds for the Contracts Award to California Code Check and Berryman &amp; Henninger, also known as Bureau Veritas, Through Contract Change Orders in a Total Amount of $700,000, $200,000 total for the first year, $100,000 for each contract, $250,000 total for years two and three, $150,000 to California Code Check, and $100,000 to Berryman &amp; Henninger to Perform Plan Check Services. At 8F2 is Resolution of Appropriation.
We found this is very useful in speeding up plan checks, whatever. Correct, Rubik?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move 8F1 and 2, and I have some comments to make afterwards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Yusefian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you said, this is very helpful. It moves certain plan checks items around. I did talk to Stuart Tom about this item. I don't know if he brought that to your attention. As you know, medical offices, hospitals have to go through certain require, certain agency through, I think, OSHPA.
OSHPA.
OSHPA. And in the state. The problem is, the state takes about eight months to go through their original drawings. And when you submit your correction, it takes three months. Now, OSHPA, realizing that they have such a backlog, have gone ahead and certified certain agencies that are OSHPA certified, and we could use them. My understanding was, as I talked to Mr. Stewart, Mr. Stewart Tom, he told me that he did not know if any of these are OSHPA certified. But there is another one that is OSHPA certified that was in this mix. We didn't go to them because they were more expensive.
Correct.
Is there any way to possibly use them? Because they return plans in eight weeks and their plan check, when you turn in your stuff, your corrections, come back to you in three weeks, not three months. Now, and the people who are willing to pay the plan checks, they're willing to pay the cost. It's just that they generally take about 75% of our money. But I thought if we could do that, that would help the three hospitals that we deal with in here and some medical offices, especially medical offices that are, let's say, outpatient surgery centers and that type of stuff.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian. What we're doing right now, I mean, you're absolutely correct. And we've had some issues. We've got some pretty major construction going on amongst our hospitals. And there's been some misperceptions about where the holdup is. And a lot of the holdup is not with the city because they have the other agency to go to. First thing we're going to do is verify with either of these two firms if they have that certification. Third thing is, I will probably be back to you. If they don't, I'll probably be back to you with this third firm. And Mr. Tom, as I'm sure, he's on vacation this week, but what he was saying is, it's more expensive for us as the city. For the applicant, it's the same. They pay their permit fee like they would any other time. We just will not recoup as much as we would. In other words, these two firms that you're considering tonight take about 70% of the plan check fee. The medical specialist takes about 75, slightly more. But in the effort of trying to get some of these things out, we recognize that this is a little more expensive. But in order to provide a better level of customer service, and in this case, just to try to keep our backlog to, you know, a respectable amount of time, we're using these outside firms.
My understanding is those medical facilities will be more than happy to pay that additional 5%, 10%, whatever it takes. Because as you can tell, if it takes 11 months to get plans through, in 11 months' cost of material alone is going to be a lot more than that little 5% or 10% they have to pay for their plan check. So that's a big thing these days.
We are looking into that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Council members Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. And what is next, please?
Next is 8G, City Attorney Regarding Denial and Findings Regarding 4701 through 4749 San Fernando Road, Houston Standards Variance Case Number PVAR 2005-042. At 8G1 is Motion Denying Houston Standards Variance and Making Findings.
Mr. Howard, would you please explain where we are on this here tonight?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight before you is the motion and findings consistent with the evidence adduced at the public hearing two weeks ago regarding the matter of the Houston standards variance at 4701 through 4749 San Fernando Road. The purpose tonight is to consider and adopt those findings. This is not a continuation of the public hearing. That public hearing is closed. The evidence that forms the basis for these findings was established by the record made two weeks ago. This is not the time to receive new evidence or to hear any evidence relating to the actual merits of the case itself. It's merely to discuss and consider the adoption or rejection of the findings.
Okay, Mr. Quintero.
Well, I hope the city council will reconsider tonight. I've driven by that location at least three times since the hearing, and it's completely unobtrusive. I mean, all you see are beautiful, what are they, oleanders? It's really the greenest spot along San Fernando Road. And I think we could just require the operator to put up some new sheets, some new, whatever it is, materials that he's using and maybe a little nicer gate. And that would be it. It's out of the way and of no consequence to anyone. So I just hate to see someone who's had a business there or had a location there for 20 years just kind of be sent on his way when there's no other use for that land. Be different if there was another use for the land, but there isn't. And he certainly isn't causing any problems. I don't remember anyone coming to the podium complaining about what was going on there. All the pictures that were taken were taken with the gates opened, not when they were closed. So all in all, I just don't see the reason to get rid of the business that's operating there.
Okay. Actually, we handle this, I have four cards. So the findings, we already made the findings, so I'll go to the public, try three minutes each, see. Please speak to the findings, what is inaccurate in the findings that we made. Rick Barnes?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Rick Barnes. On the findings, the only thing I saw that I'd like to question is, is there a time period longer than 30 days? I think that with the business being there that long and also with the businesses or land that Mr. Yusefian provided the last time I was here, I did check into all of those properties. And at this time, they are not feasible for what his use are. I mean, the use is good, but the size, the dollars that are required are outside the spectrum of what he can deal with. So that's what I'm looking at at the moment, is that we need to make certain that there's an extension of time if you don't completely reconsider as to the EPA standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a Robert Hall and a Bob Hall. Are they one of the same or... One of the same?
One of the same.
Okay, you just turned in two cards. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, City Council?
Thought you might have been my long-lost classmate.
Oh, not at all. I'm known as Bob Hall. Been a...
Yeah, I went to school with Bob Hall, but obviously you're not...
Obviously, obviously, not the same. I've been a business owner here in the city of Glendale for the past 35 years, own and operate, well, all right, perhaps as long as you. Own and operate Robert Hall and Associates on Glen Oaks Boulevard. And I find this somewhat of an appalling issue with Gay's Automotive and Towing, only because of the fact that, you know, they've been an operator here in the city of Glendale over the last 30 years. We're discussing a storage facility on San Fernando Road, as Rick Barnes had so illustrated, that basically has no other use. We have examined the storage in terms of the way that they handle their vehicles. They have never contaminated anything. They've properly cleaned. They've been in EPA standards. I think Frank Quintero, Mr. Quintero brings up a very valid point, that if there are any problems with the city of Glendale in terms of the appearance, that to close down a business of this long stature, Pat and Carville Gaye, who have been civic, civically-minded for the past 35 years, who have basically assisted the Glendale Fire Department in every way, shape, or form with their vehicles. When the Glendale Police Department needed assistance, they've been there. When the Rose Parade needed towing, they've been there. When the DARE program in the city of Glendale needed some cars for volunteer to show what the reaction is, they've been there the entire 35 years. I think to close down a storage facility or to close down a business where they've been in operation for all this time is a travesty. And what occurred on August 1st by the members of the city of Glendale should be reexamined. Certainly on the due points. And again, Mr. Quintero brings up the point, if it's cosmetic, let's be it cosmetic, but why close down such a business that have been in operation and done a fine service for the city for so long?
Thank you. Patricia Gay?
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and council members and staff and also the public. My name is Patricia Gay. I am one of the owners of Gay's Automotive and Towing. And I was very appalled at our meeting on August 1st with the city council. And I wrote down some conclusions that I feel need to be brought out and clarified. Regarding the environment, how did this become an environmental issue? There was never a question about the contamination of the environment. We are aware of the procedures of removing fluids, oils, and gas from our automobiles. Our employees follow the proper procedures at all times and have been instructed on how to properly dispose of the fluids, oils, and gas. We were asked if this lot was a necessity or a convenience. The answer to that question was twofold. Yes, by all means, this lot is a necessity. And it may not be required within the Glendale Police Contract, but it is a lot that is necessary for us to do our job to the best of our ability. We are asked to remove vehicles at the request of the Glendale Police Department. Not all vehicles are in good condition. There are many vehicles that are towed in due to the fact that they are junk on our Glendale streets. We do not have a choice of where we pick up these vehicles, or boats, or trailers, or motorhomes that have been burned. Depending on the value of the vehicle, we tow the vehicle to one of the lots. Proper procedure is followed over the allotted time to hold the vehicle. Then we tow the vehicles that have not been picked up to this particular lot so that they're not in conjunction with our good vehicles and could possibly get damaged by the removal of them. The San Fernando lot is definitely a necessity for us to do our job to the best of our ability and in the most efficient way possible. And it does reduce the risk of damage to the other valued vehicles. It was stated that we had disobeyed some rules and regulations regarding our storage facilities over the years. This is not the truth, when in fact, this puts a lot of negative fault on the city. We have always obeyed the requests that have been made to us by the city. It is not in our motive of operation to do anything unlawful or that is not in accordance with the rules of the city. At no time have we been contacted by the city about any violations before the current variance application expired. Our lot is not alone on San Fernando Road. There are other related businesses. And if I must say so, ours looks kind of nice. Another question that I have is, why were we asked to apply for a variance on this property? From the information that has been presented, there was never any intentions for the city to renew our existing variance. Instead of the city requesting that we apply for a current variance, we should have been told that due to the rezone.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll skip to the end.
Oh, no, no, no.
Harassment, continued harassment for the past three years. The harassment that myself, my family, and my employees have endured over the last three years has been amazing. Our ethics, work procedures, our establishments, our set worth have been questioned over and over and over again. We have been scrutinized with a fine-tooth comb. Although the last three years have been very difficult and tough to go through, we have never given up or given to the constant harassment. Our faith and devotion to our family-owned and operated business over the last 41 years has been our foundation and our strength. Our employees have stood by us every step of the way. They have been very patient and very supportive and have gone through this tough battle with us never giving up. We have continued to provide valued service to the city and the Glendale Police Department during this continual harassment. The August 1st council meeting was a fine example of how the city has every intention to attack and abuse of the city's resources and abuse of power aimed at us, Gay's Towing Incorporated. It just not, does not seem deserving. Thank you for your time.
I have no more cards.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Yusefian?
I will move 8G1 and just a couple of comments. I think it's important to remember about six months or a year ago, when we went ahead and gave the contracts out, Gay's Automotive was not part of the mix. They were not recommended by the police chief or the committee that was put together to decide who gets this franchise. They were excluded. Based on the numbers, they did not do well. This council, majority of this council, basically overturned the decision of the police chief that we trust, the community members that actually did the work, and partly because all of us personally know Mr. Gay, knew his commitment to the city and what he had done for this city. And we thought that that did not get a score in that card. Consequently, we changed the decision and another person who was from outside of the city, who was very qualified, had a lot to do, didn't get that. Mr. Gay got the job. At the time, he was asked if he would provide another facility that he needed to do, and he said he was going to get another facility, which, to his credit, he has done that. He had purchased another facility that is serving his purpose. He also said in that hearing, and it was said, does he need this other storage yard? It's very clear in their contract, it is not required. As a matter of fact, all of those properties he can pick up, whether it's a junk boat or whatever, can be stored in any one of those two facilities that he owns. And that's the whole thing. Mr. Hall came in and says, you are shutting this business down. We are not shutting the business down. We are not. He is compliant with his contract. His contract goes on so long as he follows all the rules and regulations that are in the franchise. And we hope that Mr. Gay or his family or his, you know, sons and daughters will provide service to this community like they have done for many, many years. But I think we need to come to some understanding, we don't do business in this country, not alone this city, like we used to 40 years ago. We don't do business like 20 years ago. There are a lot more stringent guidelines for certain things, especially contaminations. We change light posts because we cannot sand them down and paint them because of lead. Costs the city thousands of dollars to do that. That's the law. We didn't make them. It's a state law. We follow them. There is several issues there, and I think all the findings were made in here. Just because we did something for 30 years doesn't mean we continue the wrong thing. It was not allowed then, it's not allowed now. And at one point, we have to stop and say, you know, we got to change what we're doing in San Fernando Road. We're spending over $5 million, at least 2.7 just in landscaping, and another $3 to $4 million just in paving San Fernando Road, trying to change the environment and trying to improve quality of life. And that's part of the reason. This was made very clear to them early on. And Sam Manukian, who was part of BZA, which I talked to him later, he told me he recused himself because he felt that since he was on that special committee, he shouldn't have been there to vote on it. And that was unfortunate because he would have said, as they came in to interview for that job, which I found out later, that they specifically told the committee, they don't need that. So I think, I don't want to beat the dead horse, I already moved it at 8G1.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, if Mr. Howard has something pertinent...
Yeah, I was just trying to finish up with...
Well, it's pertinent to the motion, just so that it's clear. There is a typographical error in the motion. The second paragraph, first page, the address in the original motion is 4741 through 4749. It should be 4701 to 4749. So I would hope the maker of the motion would include that minor amendment.
Yes.
Mr. Najarian? I'm not, sir, second?
Well, was it seconded?
No, not yet.
I'll second the motion. I have some brief comments.
Yes.
Again, I want to, I want to reiterate, two of the speakers mentioned that we are putting Gay's Towing out of business. We are not putting them out of business. I'm a little bit, I guess I take issue with the tone of some of the remarks that are leveled at council. About eight months ago, we sent Navarro Towing packing. They rated number one on the police review. We sent Sunset Towing packing because we gave every benefit to Carville Gaye, and we understood how he was committed to the community. And he told us he was committed to the community. And he told us he was committed to the community. And Carville, we're asking for your consideration and your understanding that in making Glendale a better community, we want this storage lot of the junk cars moved. That's all I have to say.
No further discussion. Call.
Council members, Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
No.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. What's next, please?
Nine is public hearings, and at nine A is Director of Planning regarding appeal of conditional use permit, number PCUP 2005-017, located at 2331 Ramsey Drive. At 981 is motion continuing the matter and directing the city attorney to prepare written findings in support of approving the conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2005-017. 982, motion continuing the matter and directing the city attorney to prepare written findings in support of denying the conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2005-017.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll go to staff report first, then I'll open the public hearing. Anybody else is going to turn cards in? Please turn them in now. I'll forever keep your peace. Good. There will be peace in the valley.
Who's going to start first?
I think Mr. Stubb is going to...
Elaine, is Edith going to start this off?
I am.
Actually, zoning administrator Edith Fuentes is going to do the entire staff presentation. The case planner is on vacation. And she's just trying to get it set up now.
She drew the lucky straw today. That's Kennington Drive?
How many minutes do you need?
I'm saying...
Oh, there it is, Ramsey Drive.
Yeah.
You just see down? Put a view? Put a view?
There you go, there you go. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, good evening. Edith Fuentes, zoning administrator and hearing officer for this case. This hearing is for an appeal of a May 15, 2006 decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals. The board granted conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2005-0157, and this approval allowed the construction, or allows the construction, of a new two-story, single-family house on a 21,376 square foot lot. The property is located in the R1R zone, and again, two lots are being combined as one site for this property. The zoning administrator and the Board of Zoning Appeals found the proposed development to be consistent with other development in the area and compliant with the zoning ordinance requirements. In addition, the project was found also to be consistent with the requirements of the Hillside Design Guidelines. The zoning administrator and the Board of Zoning Appeals made the required four findings in approving the conditional use permit. On May 15, 2006, the Board of Zoning Appeals heard the case, and findings were made that adequately justify that the proposed project will be compatible with the R1R zone and its surrounding properties. The purpose of the requirement of a conditional use permit for new dwelling unit construction on an R1R zone lot, where the average current slope exceeds 50%, and where the grading is more than 1,500 cubic yards, is to obtain input on the proposed development where potential impacts for such development are anticipated or may be of concern to the surrounding areas. The purpose is not to prohibit development in all cases, but to provide specific conditions or attach conditions to the project to assure compatibility with its surrounding. The zoning administrator and the Board of Zoning Adjustments or Appeals findings are based on numerous sources, including the application, materials and exhibits, environmental review, site inspections, public testimonies, input from other city departments, including fire, parks and recreation, water and power, engineering, permit services, traffic and transportation, neighborhood services, and the planning department and its resources, including the general plan. Conditional use permits similar to this one have been made in the past, and findings were made for approval. The main difference with this project is that the subject lot is including two lots as one site, and the lot area, being 21,376 square feet, is substantially larger than Again, at the March 21, 2006 decision letter of the zoning administrator, the Board of Zoning Appeals found the four findings consistent with this decision of the zoning administrator, that the use will be consistent with the various elements of the general plan. The use and its associated structures will not be materially detrimental to the public health or safety. The use and facilities will not adversely conflict or affect adjacent uses or impede the normal development of surrounding properties, and that adequate public and private utilities, such as landscaping, parking spaces, and traffic circulation measures, will be provided with the use. And what I'd like to do now is just quickly walk you through our PowerPoint presentation. Again, this case is conditional use permit, CUP 2005-017. Property is located at 2331 Ramsey Drive. The appellant is Mr. Albert Nation, and the applicant is Mr. Edward Hagobian. This is an application for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a new single-family dwelling residence on a lot with an average current slope of 58%. And if you will also add that the grading that's going to be done will be more than 1,500 cubic yards. We missed that one slide here. On April 13, 2005, the applicant and the property owner submitted the application for the conditional use permit, and the public hearing was conducted for the CUP. On March 21, the CUP was approved by the zoning administrator, and then on April 5, an appeal for the approval was filed by Mr. Nation. On May 15, the Board of Zoning Appeals heard the case and sustained the hearing officer's decision and approved the conditional use permit. On May 30, an appeal for the conditional use permit was filed again by Mr. Nation. And on August 15, the subject case is scheduled here today, and that's the two issues that we are hearing the case today is again, for average current slope, which is 58%, and grading of approximately 1,800 cubic yards. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 3,768-square-foot, single-family house on a lot that's on two lots combined as one, which is approximately 21,376 square feet. The site is on R1R. The average current slope is 58%, and the lot width is approximately 221 feet. The property is located in R1R zone, floor area District 2, surrounded by R1R and also the residential open space. The average current slope, again, we have two average current slope on this property. The higher side is about 58%, I think, and the lower side is about 51 or 55.
51 or 54.
Yes. So if you really combine the two lots and take the average, it comes up to like 55.15 or 20%. But we took the highest average current slope, and that's the one we advertised for the project. This is an aerial shot of the site and the surrounding area. The yellow one is the subject site, and the orange one is the appellant's property. Here is Ramsey Drive, and at the top is Barnett Drive.
Ms. Fuentes?
Yes.
What part of the blue is paved?
There's nothing paved, I think, on this...
It's all dirt road, correct?
It's all dirt. It's called improved dirt road, but actually, there's nothing paved on it.
Got to change that definition, so what's an improved dirt road?
Yes.
I have a lot of improved fire roads up in my neck of the woods, too. We got to get a different...
And we have a few other streets that we know are...
We got a different definition for it.
Right. A couple of photos showing the property looking north, and this one looking south.
What's that structure, Ms. Fuentes?
A former house?
The...
Oh.
I looked at the Google, it seemed like a structure was there.
This one here?
Hunting Lodge or...
It looked like a dwelling it used to be there.
It looks like an old wall or some kind of an old, yeah.
The Google Earth, you look down, it looked like a structure was there many moons ago.
Yeah.
That's what's left of it.
Foundation.
Or the foundation.
Right, like I said, it's like an old wall or something.
Little hunting lodge.
Right where you can see some back.
This is, you can see Ramsey Drive here from the site. And again here, this is the view from the site, and you can see the appellant's property right there. This is the proposed site plan. It shows you where Ramsey Drive is, and the driveway coming from Ramsey Drive up to the structure. This is the garage level plan. First floor plan. Second floor plan. I think there's about four bedrooms on the second floor. This is the south elevation, where you can see it coming from the driveway. This is the north elevation. East elevation. And the west elevation.
Where the dotted lines are, you're not going to see because it's covered by the hill?
Right, right. Like, that's the existing grade line or grade level. That ends my presentation, and if you have any questions, we'll be more happy to answer them. I also would like to just mention that we have staff from engineering, parks and recreation, traffic and transportation, to answer any questions you may have.
I'm kind of curious on the garage. You drive into the garage, right? But just when you're doing it, I glanced, and it looked like one of the parking spaces you can't drive into. It looks like the steps of the house are in front of it.
You may want to ask the architect, and he can maybe... We have the plans, the lower level underneath that existing...
There's a drawing that showed three-car garage, and then looking at the garage floor plan, unless they're tandem or something, I don't understand. Okay, I'll ask. Question, Mr. Yusefian?
Yeah, I have a question. This, the house basically straddles over the two property lines.
That's correct.
Okay. So would the applicant be required to do a lot line adjustment?
No, we're considering this as one side.
Okay, so how would you do that? Because, for example, I know, I did some work in San Bernardino County, and if you do put a structure on a lot line, they force you to go there and literally make that into one lot. So merge the two lots. I mean, that's required. Don't we require that in here?
The fact that the structure crosses the line, technically, it ties the two lots as one side.
Right, but we don't require them, as far as subdivision's concerned, to go there and merge that?
We don't, but if you want to make that part of the condition, we can make that part of the condition of approval.
Okay. Okay, that's the end of the staff report. There's no questions. We could open the public hearing. Any more cards? I said before, pass all the cards in. Now here come two more. This is it. No more cards. Forget it.
Mayor. If we have questions from staff, other staff, do we ask them now, or you want to wait until after?
Ask as we go. This could get complicated.
Should I ask them now?
Oh, you mean, staff before you... I suggest we hear the... Let's hear them first.
Sounds good. Because I have grading issues to ask, I have tree issues to ask, questions.
Remember, engineering hasn't got their hands on this yet. They're going to have a field day. Believe me, they're going to have a field day.
Well, that's why he's sitting there, because I got some questions to ask, good ones.
I've got them, too. I can read plans. Okay. Who's presenting for the appellant? Okay.
My name is Albert Natian. I'm the...
Okay. So you've got your card in here. And who's presenting the other side? Janelle, representing. Okay, how many minutes do you need? Adian?
I assumed it was 15 minutes?
No, wrong assumption.
Okay, correcting.
How many minutes do you need?
Roughly 10 to 12 minutes.
Start you with 10, and then if you need more, we'll go there.
And would I have rebuttal time?
You'll have rebuttal time. Just your name for the record.
My name is Albert Natian, the appellant in this case. I have prepared some documents that I would like the council members to have a copy each. I have one additional one, if anybody else wants to get one, it's welcome to have one.
Give one to the city attorney, please.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Give one to the...
Do I get started?
You may start.
Okay.
Put the clock down on 10 minutes.
All right. Honorable Mayor Weaver, honorable council members Manukian, who's not here unfortunately, Najarian, Quintero, and Yusefian. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concerns regarding the proposed project. I appreciate your patience in giving me an audience. This appellant does not, in principle, oppose the construction of any and all houses upon the set lots. This appellant believes that the owner is entitled to the benefits that can arise from the ownership of the set lots, provided the construction of the proposed house meets the applicable laws and does not diminish and does not undermine the neighbor's use of their properties. Number one, I'm right now reading from in the folder, if you look at that, I'm reading the oral presentation by the appellant. Number one, it's a documented fact, as attested by Mr. William McKinley of the Parks and Recreation, that the owner, Mr. Casabian, who's present in the audience tonight, a seasoned and licensed general building contractor, license number 593314, aware of the illegality of his actions, furtively and unlawfully, caught and removed on December 21, 2003, a protected, healthy, mature, coastlive oak tree, soon after he purchased his property on Ramsey Drive, and thereafter tried to hide the stump of the oak tree by covering it with debris. Had the oak tree been allowed to exist, whose location would have interfered with the proposed driveway, the applicant would have experienced certain challenges that would have necessitated the placement of the proposed driveway on Barnett Drive. Mr. Casabian's premeditated and illegal breach of the City of Glendale Code protecting native oak trees is sufficient proof of his contempt for codes and regulations, especially those that do not promote his goals. By removing an oak tree, Mr. Casabian has played the city. Whether or not he would get caught, he removed an obstacle potentially affecting his precontemplated project upon the property. Either way, he wins. Number two, the proposed placement of the driveway between two sharp corners of winding and curving Ramsey Drive, as was demonstrated by Ms. Fuentes in her PowerPoint presentation. Again, number two, the proposed placement of the driveway between two sharp corners of winding and curving Ramsey Drive will create... of winding and curving Ramsey Drive will create a traffic hazard due to compromised visibility of drivers exiting the driveway and others turning around or approaching the sharp corners. According to the testimony of Mr. Tommy Mitchell, who's present in the audience today of Traffic and Transportation Administration, the proposed driveway does not satisfy the required minimum of fifty feet diameter for the U-turn needed as an average-sized automobile enters or exits the said driveway. He has stated that his office's major concerns related to the intersection of the driveway with Ramsey Drive in the, uh, in that the city engineer should confirm that the driveway can safely accommodate vehicular turning movements to and from the said driveway. If I can show a, well, not here with me at this time, um, I wanted to show a demonstration, while I miss that opportunity. Where was I? Yes, uh, Mr. Tom Mitchell has stated that his office's major concerns related to the intersection of the driveway with Ramsey Drive in that the city engineer should confirm that the driveway can safely accommodate vehicular turning movements to and from the said driveway. In short, the placement of the driveway poses serious challenges that may not be resolved without significant revisions in the project, necessitating deeper and sizably additional excavation into the steep driveway lot. This is important, and it will happen, as will be demonstrated later on tonight. In short, the placement of the driveway poses serious challenges that may not be resolved without significant revisions in the project, necessitating deeper and sizably additional excavation into the, into the steep driveway lot. As such, this issue must be addressed before the granting of CUP, since this CUP addresses the amount of earth material excavation. A CUP must not be granted if, as a result of reshaping the driveway, earth material in excess of eighteen hundred cubic yards will be excavated. To maximize safety for the public, as well as the future dwellers of the proposed house, a more appropriate alternative would be for the driveway to be placed on Barnett Drive. The placement of the driveway on the wider and straighter Barnett Drive will provide for the unobstructed view of the traffic in both directions. Number three, in the interest of public safety, it is advisable that the council issue a declaration banning street parking on the entire narrow and winding stretch of Ramsey Drive. If the council grants the CUP, Mr. Doug Nichols of the Division of, um, okay, if the council, uh, grants the CUP, period. Mr. Doug Nichols of the Division of Fire Prevention has indicated that his office's major concerns related to the project's location, as it is in a high-fire hazard area, and as access to it is restricted due to the narrowness of Ramsey Drive. It is absolutely impossible for the large fire engines to maneuver along the narrow and winding Ramsey Drive if, at any point along Ramsey Drive, a car is placed. As a requisite to the proposed project, Ramsey Drive will be widened and paved, starting from Cascadia Drive to the driveway of the proposed project. There are several mature, healthy, coastlive oak trees flanking Ramsey Drive along the noted stretch that will be either eliminated or adversely affected as a result of improving Ramsey Drive. The improving of Ramsey Drive, although engendered by this project, is a completely separate matter from the proposed project. The city has never notified the public and the general neighborhood about this anticipated improvement upon the Ramsey Drive. The city has not issued a public notice, nor has it erected any physical notice anywhere on Ramsey Drive informing the public of forthcoming improvement upon Ramsey Drive. Given the fact that the City of Glendale is committed to protecting its native trees, it behooves the city to actively solicit public input regarding this very important anticipated development before granting an ECP to the project. Architect Edward Hagobian, the applicant for the project, has claimed that eighteen hundred cubic yards of earth material will be excavated and removed from the property as a result of construction upon the property. This figure does not at all take into consideration additional earth material that will be excavated and removed from the vertical portions of the set property in conjunction with the widening and paving of Ramsey Drive. The southern portion of the set property is almost vertical in, in most of its portions. When the road, when Ramsey Drive is widened, you could imagine, we're talking about some probably twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet of almost vertical earth would have to be widened, and that would significantly increase the amount of earth material removed. This, the city staff seem to be totally oblivious to this eventuality once Ramsey Drive will be widened and paved. The true amount of earth material excavated and removed will be way over the claimed eighteen hundred cubic yards. As such, CUP should not be granted, since the eighteen hundred cubic yards is the allowed limit for this CUP. One way to measure the mass of a house is to sum up all usable floor areas enclosed within the structure. As it turns out, the total floor area for this project, including only enclosed areas, is more than fifty-four hundred square feet. I will demonstrate this in my rebuttal, that in, in effect, the total enclosed square footage of this project is more than fifty-four hundred square feet. It suffices to note that the average square footage and the median square footage of the set of all houses within six hundred feet of the proposed project site is two, two thousand thirty-nine and one thousand nine hundred seventy-four respectively. Uh, in your folder, you'll notice that I have a sheet of paper. It's a, uh, Excel prepared sheet of paper, uh, paper that has included all the houses within the six hundred feet of the proposed project. It shows the average and the median of the houses within that set. All right, continuing. As can be seen, this house is a giant mansion among mostly small-sized houses. It's still, I still have to demonstrate that truly, the total square footage of the house, enclosed square footage, is fifty-four hundred, and I will do that in my rebuttal. Compared to the neighbored houses, this project is a massive house way out of proportion. It is important not to be indifferent to the incompatibility of this house within its neighborhood. The average number of stories of the houses in the project's neighborhood is about two. This, the project's three stories, and if you just look at the picture, the front picture, you'll notice that there's, there's the garage, there's the second story, and there's the third story. The building is a three-story structure. I mean, if I look at an apple, and it tastes like an apple, it must be an apple. This building, as you look at the frontage of that, is three stories as a building structure. Okay? Now, the proposed house, perched monolithically atop a hill, will be grotesquely obtrusive for this hillside neighborhood. It will dwarf and diminish other surrounding houses. For only demonstration purposes, here I have, I have done a Photoshop, I have, uh, down here, this is a picture that I've taken, uh, of my house and of my neighbor's house, without the, any house up there. This is right up here, is where Mr. Kasabian, the owner's house, will be perched. And only for demonstration purposes, I've put a model house there to show its impact to the, uh, with respect to the surrounding houses. If, if it's okay with the council members, I would like this to be passed around. All right. I have just about one more paragraph to go, may I finish that?
Go ahead, just put a clock on, to see what's...
Very quickly, there was no CUP hearing notice signed for the PCUP two thousand five zero one seven posted at the lot for the applicant's proposed project at any time prior to the CUP hearing date of February eight, two thousand and six. This can be attested by all the neighbors who regularly frequent Ramsey Drive and Barnett Drives. Both the zoning administrator and the Board of Zoning Appeals have failed to consider the seriousness of this, seriousness of this fact, and have dismissed the evidence conclusively supporting this fact. This appellant can prove that the said sign was placed on an altogether different property near the point of transition between Ramsey Drive and Barnett Drive. Now, it will be shown up there where Barnett Drive and Ramsey Drive meet, and it was also demonstrated on the PowerPoint, uh, demonstration. Where, where Ramsey Drive and Barnett Drive meet, with that transition point, that's where the sign was placed. Um, and just about done. All right. This appellant can prove the said sign was placed on an altogether different lot. I have a picture taken for that purpose, I would like this to be passed around, uh, to the council members, please. All right. It is fair to say that a significant portion of the public has been potentially misled and prejudiced against by the misplacement of the CUP hearing notice sign. This lapse in procedure and due process is grounds enough for dismissal of the conclusions and effects of the entire CUP hearing that was done, as Ms. Fuentes noted. Thank you, I'm done.
Question, you said you're going to present evidence in the rebuttal phase?
Uh, I, yes, I have additional material.
On how many square feet there are?
Yes.
You can absolutely prove it's over five thousand?
Enclosed square footage, yes.
And include the garage.
So you're throwing the garage into the total?
Yes. Garage, well, um, their garage is about seven hundred nineteen square foot.
Okay.
And their, uh, area, uh, the, the floor area is three thousand seven hundred something.
Okay.
But there is another area, by the way, I want to congratulate you, you notice, you're, you're very perceptive, uh, about the, the, that, that garage. What you see there in front of you is not the garage door. The garage is way inside, and the space in front of the garage is totally unaccounted for. I can demonstrate that to you, I have, I have a model house made to demonstrate precisely that.
I'm looking at the plans. You're also going to, um, prove conclusively it's more than eighteen hundred cubic yards of earth being removed?
Uh, well...
Is that hearsay?
Well, what's gonna happen is that, um, the, as a result of widening the street, portions of the set lot, which is a vertical component, it's a vertical mass...
So you're counting the street improvements?
Which is a separate deal from the house deal.
I, I know, but to build the house...
It's eighteen hundred.
Okay.
However, from that said lot, when the street is widened, you have additional removal of earth material.
They're gonna need fill, because they're gonna build retaining walls to go out and build it. They're gonna need material.
Well, uh, my statement is that there is, I, I agree with your observation, but the fact is that there will be more earth material removed.
Eighteen hundred be removed, but the, that's a cut. There's gonna be a fill. They're gonna build retaining walls, they're gonna put compacted earth in to widen the street to the extent that, uh, engineering wants.
I don't know if, if that portion, when the street is widened, there will be any retaining wall. I don't know if there is any retaining wall planned for.
Well, I think if it gets to city standards, curb, gutter, whatever, you're going out over the bank, you're gonna build retaining walls.
I didn't know that.
Okay, but you'll approve the other point when you come back.
Okay.
The point you're making is that a house footprint, if you wanna call it that, that the garage in reality is placed towards the back, so that you have all of this square footage that's open on all sides.
Yeah, which is not accounted for at all. In fact, it's conspicuously unnamed. If you look at all the other rooms, there's kitchen, named so, bedrooms, named so. That particular space, which is a very usable space, we, no, we all know what it's gonna be used for, for cars, parking, and all of that. That is there, and it's not accounted for, it's unnamed.
We'll clarify this when it comes up, because these section views aren't mentioned on the drawing, so I can't correlate them. So I'll ask the architect to show me where they are. Maybe I can't see it for everything that's on here.
I've, I have a model house made that I'll show it better, sort of, later on.
Okay, that's, how many minutes did he take, roughly, twelve, thirteen, twelve? Okay, now we go to the other side of it?
Thank you.
You build tomorrow? Ms. Williams, you got at least ten, twelve, if you need it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Weaver, City Council. My name's Janelle Williams, twenty-four eighteen Honolulu Avenue in Glendale. And, um, I would just like to begin by, I also have a handout, Mr. Kasabian, thank you very much. Just go through the findings for the conditional use permit that we're asking. The applicant, Mr. Kasabian, proposes to build a three thousand seven hundred sixty-eight square-foot house on a twenty-one thousand five hundred seventy-six square-foot lot. The house is designed per the Hillside Design Guidelines with one thousand nine hundred fifty-seven habitable feet, a floor area on the ground floor, and a stepped second floor of seventeen ninety-two. The average current slope on the portion of the site to be developed is only forty-eight percent. The home will occupy seventeen percent of the lot, leaving the remainder ungraded. It will meet all setback standards, as well as all development standards specified by the zoning code. The development is consistent with the surrounding area. The proposed development is on a combined lot, which meets all city standards for a single-family residential development in the R1R zone, which is consistent with the low-density residential designation of the land use element of the general plan. In this case, zoning and land use are consistent, and this proposed house should be approved. It should be noted that the applicant purchased two lots for this project and has agreed to all of the city's conditions of approval. The appellant, Mr. Najarian's, home is three thousand one hundred seventy-two square feet, not counting his garage, and, and that's a difference of five hundred ninety-six square feet from our project. The development will not be detrimental to the public health, the safety, the general wel, welfare, or to the environment, since it consists of a single-family residence, which is consistent with the existing land uses in the area. Due to the sighting of the house on the lot, the design of the house itself, and the substantial amount of landscaped area and ungraded open space proposed for the pro, project, this house will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare, or to the environment. Glendale's codes are intended to support appropriate development where all elements are consistent and the development is sensitive. This building type is appropriate on this combined parcel. The proposed use will not adversely affect or conflict with adjacent uses, or impede the normal development of surrounding property in any way. The proposed single-family residence will not block the view from surrounding properties, because it will have ample setbacks. There will be no crowding of adjacent homes. The proposed project is consistent with the neighborhood in development and uses. The neighborhood is developed with similar homes on lots with the same or similar characteristics relative to size, lot width, and slope. The subject lot is of sufficient width and area to accommodate the development of the proposed single-family residence. The lot has a street frontage in excess of two hundred and twenty feet, and a lot area of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. Um, the appellant stated that he would rather see the driveway come in off of Barnett Drive. That frontage on Barnett is, um, not code compliant, it's under fifty feet. The applicant specifically purchased the, these two lots for frontage on Ramsey Drive. Development of the house consistent with the Hillside Design Guidelines, subject to review by the Design Review Board, will ensure that no conflict exists with adjacent uses. The applicant has combined two lots together in order to be consistent with the objectives of good Hillside Design and the wishes of the City Council. Utilities for the proposed project are available, phone access, sewer water, gas connections already serve the neighborhood. The licensed landscape architect has designed the landscaping, it addresses the topography of the land, brings in natural plants, flowers, and trees that are indigenous to the area, as well as fire resistant. Parking spaces will be provided for the homeowner, and attached three-car garage, which is incorporated into the house. And that portion that comes forward is actually a port of cashier. It's open to the outside, but it is covered. So I don't know what, um, Mr. Najarian said, obviously will be used for something else, I don't know what, it, uh, it's for automobiles. Uh, there will be room for guests to park in the driveway as well. All conditions of approval have been studied by the applicant, and he has agreed to abide by all of the conditions set forth by engineering and planning the City of Glendale. The house has been designed to meet or exceed all applicable standards as established in the Uniform Building Code, the Engineering Code, Glendale Municipal Code, the R1R Ordinance, the Grading Ordinance, the Hillside Design Guidelines, and the Landscaping Guidelines. Approving this conditional use permit will simply offer the property owner the same privileges enjoyed by other properties located in the same zone and under the same circumstances, including the, uh, the appellant's property. By the way, his home faces, uh, Cascadia Drive, which is, which is below our project. And, uh, I also wanted to state that our, our, the house, as you can see, is situated, will be situated in the center of the lot, and not perched monolithically atop a hill, nor is it a mansion. Thank you very much.